Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the February 7th, 2024 Grants Pass City Council Meeting. We start our meetings with a moment of silence, so please join me for that. Please rise for the flag salute. All right. Good evening. It looks like Counselor Oje just came in the back. Counselor Yonker is going to be late but joining us remotely later this evening. He's up in Salem. And we have a couple of public hearings to get started with. So at this time, I will open the public hearing to consider an ordinance amending Development Code Article 22 for residential development standards. We'll begin the hearing with a staff report, followed by public comment, and then the matter will be discussed and acted upon by the council. Is there anyone present who wishes to challenge the authority of the council in this matter? Do any counselors wish to abstain from participating in this hearing or declare a potential conflict of interest? In this hearing, the decision of the council will be based upon specific criteria. All testimony and evidence must be directed toward those criteria. The criteria which apply in this case are noted in the staff report. It is important to remember if you fail to raise an issue with enough detail to afford the council and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on the issue. We will now begin the hearing with the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, members of the public, I'm going to go out on a limb and guess that the vast majority of folks here are not here to learn about multifamily open space requirements. So I am going to try to move this along, but please do stop me and if you want to, and of course, at the end, we can have more dialogue. But we did try to trim it down for you, so it shouldn't be too bad. So the hearing tonight, I mean, I would say if we were going to summarize this into one thing, it's the, in terms of what's the desire and the motivation for having this code amendment, it's really to help foster more infill development. The council is well aware and has talked several times about what are the, what are various incentives that the city can use to encourage more infill development? And this is one of those. It actually started a couple of years ago. The Housing Advisory Committee began looking, and thanks to Amber Neek, our housing specialist, for kind of raising this to the forefront and kind of helping to spearhead this. But really at issue is the fact that the currently, if you want to do a multifamily development in the City of Grants Pass, you have to do 30% of your area as open space. And that, while we haven't received a direct notification that that's why somebody did not build multifamily in Grants Pass, we have some tangential evidence, shall we say, that says, yeah, that's probably, it could be a barrier, certainly a perceived barrier because that is a high number for us. So I just want to have that preliminary kind of overview as terms of really one of the main reasons for why you're seeing this tonight. So as noted there, the summary, we're really, we're talking about Article 22 in the Development Code. That's the residential section of the code. And if approved tonight, the amendment would do two main things. It would streamline and simplify the open space requirements in a multifamily residential project, which is five units or more. And then it would also align the manufactured home standards for the city with the state. Some of this, on this slide, I touched on, but really quickly, what this code does, this amendment does, it creates an exemption for common open space for parcels that are under a half acre. Right now, there is no exemption if you develop on a parcel that's a half acre or below. This takes those out of the equation altogether and says if you're coming in and say you want to do six units on a half acre, there's no open space requirement, period. It also deals with those if you're coming in with 10 or fewer. That's also exempted. It removes the percentage of common open space and replaces them with what we're proposing as high-value recreation areas. I'll touch on that in just a minute. It removes the size restrictions for indoor recreation space. It removes the requirement for private open space. That would be something like a back patio on an apartment. That would be an example of a private open space that's not common or open to everyone in a development. Today's code actually has a requirement for at least some private open space. So that is stricken under this code. It gives more flexibility in landscape requirements for undeveloped or redeveloping sites that are in commercial zones. It uses the standard setbacks rather than the setbacks that were set in 2017. It exempts, as I mentioned, developments that have 10 or fewer units. Update allowable placement of four to six manufactured dwelling units on a lot without meeting the requirements of a manufactured dwelling park. So basically today, if you do more than three manufactured homes on one site, you have to call it a manufactured home park. That triggers a whole nother set of state mandates and standards for what a manufactured home park has to have. That got changed in the legislature where this basically aligns our code with saying if you do between four and six, you're not a manufactured home park and you have various other, you have much fewer standards that you have to follow. And then it also removes the size restriction for placement of manufactured dwellings. I won't continue on this. This is all on page 17 of your packet. There's quite a few changes in Article 22. I've touched already on most of these, but if you want to see the details, we can go into those. But page 17 is where they start, and then they're all redlined for your, there in your There is a distinction, and I want to call this out in number two, between residentially zoned parcels and non-residential parcels. And the Housing Advisory Committee reviewed this and supported it. The Urban Planning Commission also reviewed it and supported it. But I did want to point out, because this is not part of the current code, the difference between if you come in with a project in a residential zone for an apartment complex or you come in a, let's say, a general commercial zone. This code does require a little more open space if you're not in a residential zone. And talking with Amber, it sounds like the genesis for this really had to do with the fact that in most of our commercial zones, you have, you know, fewer setbacks, and so there's already naturally not as much open space versus in a residential zone, you have more of those setbacks and those perimeters that have to have some landscaping. And so this kind of helps to ensure that you're going to see a little bit more open space if you're in a commercial zone. Let's see, moving on here, just to kind of visualize this, help the council to visualize this, here's just a picture of a site on F Street, an aerial on F Street today. It's a fairly small lot, 7,300 square feet in the blue box here, and it has one small structure on it. But, you know, it has the potential for maybe somebody to come in and say, oh, you know, there's quite a bit of space here, and the current structure is in the corner, it's not right in the middle, you know, I might be interested in redeveloping this. Well, today, there are no density requirements, there's no parking, no setbacks, but there is an open space requirement. And this lot would be subject to it because there's no minimum size in today's code. And you would have to have 30% of this site, which is only 7,300 square feet. So here's, if you, we'll draw this purple box in here, so that basically leaves you with, you know, a small area. The proposed text amendment exempts all parcels under a half acre and under 10 units from having to do any open space. So just to be clear, that's, it doesn't require a smaller amount, it requires zero if you're doing 10 or fewer units and you're on a half acre or less. Another assumption with that rule is that you are often closer to a park or you're often closer to some other kind of urban amenity that you can have access to. So you're not necessarily, you know, going to be using that open space anyway because you have access to some other units. Moving along, so the high-value recreation areas, this is a new term that's introduced under this code amendment. It replaces common open space areas based on several calculations, and it removes all requirements for open space. So this box at the bottom here on the slide is what our current code is. So you can see here, if you're, for example, going five to 10 units, you have to have a minimum open space of 500 square feet, and that open space has to be at least 20 feet wide and a width-to-depth ratio of three to one. That just, you know, tries to prevent something that looks like a bowling alley from being that it has to be some reasonable amount of space. So a lot of these requirements, you know, originated many, many years ago through the federal government when they were, you know, seeing more and trying to say, okay, some of these multifamily units, we want to have them be a little bit more livable and not so dense and give some kind of opportunity for people to, you know, go out of their apartment and have a place to walk or sit or have a barbecue. So these kind of derive from some of that. This is, now we're trying to kind of bring it back a little bit into alignment. This slide just shows what our current open space calculations is. Again, it's 30%, and then there's some other requirements there. You can't have more than 50% located in your landscape area, for example. We'll continue on. This one I mentioned earlier, it does differentiate between residential zoning and non-residential zoning. The 400 square feet is required in the residential zone, 1,000 in the non-residential zones. Purpose of this slide was just to kind of help demonstrate to the council some of these darker areas, these parcels. The red is the general commercial zone that we see along Parkway, for example, where you could potentially see some of these redevelop. There certainly are some opportunities to, in the future, to have some kind of multifamily either above an existing or come in and, you know, redevelop on a portion of a site that is largely undeveloped or maybe has a lot of parking, excessive parking, you could see some other units potentially built. So that really is the multifamily open space piece of the code amendment. The other minor one has to do with this manufactured home and housing. The ordinance basically says, yes, if you're going to do four to six, you don't have to call it a manufactured home park, and so you do the individual. We wanted to just highlight for you, though, that doesn't mean that there are no standards at all for manufactured homes if you're doing, say, four to six. What's up here on the screen now is just a summary of what we already have. There's no, there's no changes to what is required for a manufactured house, but we just wanted to remind you what's on the upper left here is kind of what you might think of as the old manufactured home, as the old trailers. We still certainly see some of these around, but they have no design requirements. And if you have one today, you still don't have any design requirements, they're grandfathered in. But if you're coming in with a new manufactured home from this point forward, there are things like roof overhangs or, you know, having three foot or eight feet of height in bay windows, things like that. One change that staff is recommending that we would request that you include in your motion tonight, that's not in the packet, and this was caught between the Planning Commission recommendation and tonight's hearing, is in Section 22.105. This table talks about how far a multifamily building has to be from a property line if you are adjacent to an existing single family. It was showing as being stricken under the code, and honestly, I think that was an error in the original drafting. We do think that if you are coming in adjacent to an existing single family project, that there does need to be some degree of separation because the height limits go up. So that's what this table is attempting to do. So if the council agrees with that in terms of retaining the setbacks for properties that are zoned for low, moderate residential, then we would just ask that you retain that The next two slides are just the criterion that is required under the ordinance if you're going to approve a text amendment. The staff went through this, Planning Commission went through that, criterion one, two, three, and four were found to be met. And then the Planning Commission does recommend approval of this, like I said, with the one change from staff tonight on that prior slide. So unless you have any other questions, that's all I have.
Thank you, Brad. Council, do you have questions? Go ahead, Rob.
Just real quick, on slide number nine, trying to make, I was trying to make some sense out of it. The first, very first sentence, should that say all developments with 11 or fewer? I think that's, I think that's a typo there. The two paragraphs are supposed to be different from each other. All right?
Well, the difference is the residentially zoned, the bold, versus non-residentially zoned. So no, we are talking about 11 or more that are required to comply with open space.
Thank you.
Any other questions? DJ?
Yeah, can you elaborate a little bit more on the setback requirements? Slide 12. Where'd you come up with the one-to-one ratio with the minimums?
So this is, this is, has been in Article 22 for quite a while. Are you asking Counselor about the right column there in terms of the one, one foot for one foot?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's not a new requirement. I think the city has had that in there. I couldn't tell you the original genesis for why, you know, they came up with that particular ratio. I mean, I think that, you know, it gets to the, you have to have some way to determine what is the setback as your, as your building increases in height, what is that setback? And that's the ratio that has been in the code for a while.
Just follow-up question. Do you know if that was considered in deliberation with Housing Advisory or any other committee that put this together?
I don't.
Do you want to repeat the question?
Was there any consideration made specifically to the setback requirements? You can have just a second, Doug, because we have to staff do this portion, but Amber was at that meeting, so maybe she can help out.
Sneaking in here. So I believe when it got struck entirely, we were thinking, we were hoping to lean on the new solar setback standards, but in talking afterwards, it seemed like we weren't quite ready to pull that completely out. Does that answer the question?
Yes.
Any other questions? All right. This is a public hearing, so we will open it up to the public. Does anybody, is there anybody here who wanted to speak on behalf of this issue? Doug Walker?
Yeah, I will. Doug, Doug Walker, Housing Advisory Committee. To DJ's point, no, we didn't discuss that ratio, but we did discuss whether we should strike it or not because of solar setbacks. So that ratio was never reviewed and whether it should be adjusted or not. I did want to take an opportunity to address something that Counselor Jair brought up at the last meeting of the, what wasn't called setting, but where committees checked it. And she asked, is there any way of speeding up the housing reform process that we're going through, that we've been at for seven or eight years? And I said, rather, I didn't take the opportunity to really hammer this home, but staff time. This has been, open space, we've been doing that for two years now, adjusting open space. If we want housing reform to happen faster, if code reform wants to happen faster, it's staff time. And I understand you all struggle with staff time because that means budget and money and taxes, but if you want that housing reform to happen faster, it's a very complicated text and it takes staff time. But I'd encourage you to adopt this. It's going to help quite a bit. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wanted to speak on this issue? Please step forward, state your name, let us know whether or not you live in the city.
I once spoke with a city firefighter, and he told me they're making our job a lot more difficult because of density. You have to fight the fire with one, at one home, but not only one home, the one in between and the one next to that. He said, it makes our job a lot more difficult. The more dense you make a city, the harder it is to control a fire, simply put. Thank you.
Anybody else? Step forward, state your name, and let us know whether or not you live in the city.
Rika Brown, Grants Pass. Stephen has a point there about setbacks from property lines being so narrow. You look at the pictures after the Santa Rosa fire, you could see the outlines of all the houses and all the fences in ash. And it was pretty obvious, they had five-foot setbacks with wooden fences between them, you know, setback from the wall. The roofs practically meet. And I'm pretty sure, because that's how I've seen it happening in this town. I've got a neighbor that was built up, you know, after I moved in, and their roof is about two feet from their fence. And yeah, that's how you get whole subdivisions burning, is having narrow setbacks between Also, overpricing the water. Because, you know, if people can't water, they don't garden, they don't look at their yard, they use, they pile stuff against the house to keep it dry, you know, excess stuff. And that's another way that subdivisions burn down. I saw over at Central Point when I was checking out, looking for a dog that was advertised. And all these places had very narrow around them, full of dry wheats, dry grasses, just waiting for a match. Thank you.
Does anybody else want to speak on this issue? All right, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to council for discussion. Sir, were you here to speak about the housing open space issue?
Just tell us that housing right now?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry to bother you.
All right, we'll close the public comment. Council, do you have any discussion? Brian?
I think it's pretty straightforward. I'll just make a motion to adopt the ordinance amending Grants Pass Development Code Article 22 residential development standards and have it read by title only first reading with the amendment to retain Table 22.4 as recommended by staff.
Seconded by Valerie. Thank you. Discussion on that motion? Valerie?
Well, I just wanted to add that we don't live in the 60s and 70s anymore, and affordability is truly an issue that we are facing. And everybody who is in this room who knows somebody's looking for a house and wants to find a place to live, we have a problem with housing. So bringing in housing and making it so that we can get the housing is a big priority of this council. So there's been a lot of work that's gone into it, there's a lot of steps we have in housing, people, this is coming down from the state in the middle of the housing code, so we're just doing what we can to get as much housing as possible that is affordable in our community.
Rick?
Brian, are you willing to amend your motion to include Section 22 on keeping the table? Oh, you did. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, Brian, you made the motion to approve the ordinance. How do you vote?
Yes.
Vanessa?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
DJ?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
An ordinance of the council of the City of Grants Pass amending Development Code Article 22 residential development standards as amended.
Rick?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance amending Grants Pass Development Code Article 22 residential development standards, have it read by title only second reading, also to retain Table 22-4.
Is there a second? Joel? Any discussion? All right, Rick, you made the motion. How do you vote?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
DJ?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Vanessa?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
An ordinance of the, excuse me, an ordinance of the council of the City of Grants Pass amending Development Code Article 22 residential development standards as amended.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to our next hearing. At this time, I will open the public hearing to consider an ordinance correcting ordinance number 235865 solar standards for development code Article 22 residential development and Article 30 definitions. Is there anyone present? Or we will begin the hearing with a staff report, followed by public comment, and then the matter will be discussed and acted upon by the council. Is there anyone present who wishes to challenge the authority of the council to consider this matter? Do any counselors wish to abstain from participating in this hearing or declare a potential conflict of interest? In this hearing, the decision of the council will be based upon specific criteria. All testimony and evidence must be directed toward those criteria. The criteria which apply in this case are noted in the staff report. It is important to remember if you fail to raise an issue with enough detail to afford the council and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on the issue. We will now begin the hearing with the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor and members of the city council and public and city staff. The item before you is a correcting ordinance to ordinance number 23-5865. This holds our new solar standards in Articles 22 and 30. So just a brief subject and summary, you'll recall, recall, in 2023, public hearings were held by the Urban Area Planning Commission on April 12th and by city council on July 19th, which approved the amendment adopting new solar standards in the Grants Pass Development Code. This proposed ordinance tonight would make minor citation and editorial corrections to ordinance number 23-5865, and these are the solar standards in our development code under Article 22 and Article 30. Relationship to council goals facilitates sustainable, facilitates sustainable and management growth by redefining and clarifying solar setback standards to be less prohibitive to residential densification and increase in flexibility to administer and enforce this ordinance. By way of background, since the council has adopted this ordinance last July, staff has identified several citation and labeling errors to this ordinance and finds these errors exceed the Scribner error levels and require a full correcting ordinance to be reviewed and approved by council tonight. This ordinance makes minor but non-substantial corrections to ordinance number 23-5865. Again, these are the new solar standards in Article 22 and Article 30. The marked-up text amendments to the Articles 22 and 30 are summarized and explained in your staff packet beginning on page 73, and these edits include correcting sections, including figure numbers, inserting missing section numbers, and inserting three definitions under Article 30, namely solar access permit, height limitation, solar heating hours, and solar setback. So the call to action tonight, as far as cost implications, staff resources will be to developers and members of the public. And the recommendation simply tonight is to approve the ordinance correcting ordinance number 23-5865. Again, these are the solar standards held in the development code, Articles 22, which is our residential development code, and Articles 30, which is our definitions. And then our alternatives behind me as well. That's a brief staff report. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mark. Counsel, do you have any questions? No questions? All right. We do have Dwayne online now. I don't think he has any questions, just pointing out that he's with us. Okay, we will open up the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who wanted to comment on this? All right, we'll close the public hearing, turn it over to council for discussion. Brian?
I move to adopt the ordinance, or, excuse me, I move to adopt the ordinance correcting ordinance number 23-5865 Solar Standards for Development Code Article 22 Residential Development and Article 30 Definitions of the Grants Pass Development Code and have it read by title only first reading.
Thank you. Seconded by Rick. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Brian, you made the motion to approve. How do you vote?
Yes.
Vanessa?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
DJ?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
An ordinance of the council of the city of Grants Pass correcting ordinance number 23-5865 Solar Standards for Development Code Article 22 Development Residential Development and Article 30 Definitions.
Thank you. Valerie?
Yes, I move to approve the ordinance correcting ordinance number 25-5865 Solar Standards for Development Code Article 22 Residential Development and Article 30 Definitions as submitted. Second reading.
Thank you. Seconded by Joel. Any discussion? Valerie, you made the motion to approve. How do you vote?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
DJ?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Vanessa?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
An ordinance of the council of the city of Grants Pass correcting ordinance number 23-5865 Solar Standards for Development Code Article 22 Residential Development and Article 30 Definitions.
Thank you. Just for the audience, when we have an ordinance, we have to vote on it twice. And if it's unanimous, we can do it back to back. If it's not unanimous, we do it at two different meetings. So that's, that's why we vote twice, and it always feels a little odd, but. Next up, we have a consideration of an ordinance that would annex the property at 630 Lincoln Road into the Grants Pass city limits. And Mark, you have the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council and public. Yes, this next item is the Phillips annexation request for a property located at 630 Lincoln Road. Just a brief summary, this ordinance will annex parcel 36-06-13 DC Tax Lot 100, which is also addressed 630 Lincoln Road. It's located along the western portion of Lincoln Road between southwest G Street and southwest Bridge Streets into city limits. And the relationship to council goals facilitates sustainable manageable, manageable growth by annexing properties that currently receives municipal services into city limits. This is a vicinity map in terms of the proposed property on 630, 30 Lincoln Road. The property itself is highlighted in the orange. To the north, again, is southwest G Street, and to the south is Bridge Street, and it's the westerly to, and Lincoln Road is, the property is just left or west of Lincoln Road. The property is zoned R18, which retains city zoning, and it's approximately just a little over an acre. The serial map provides a better kind of indication in terms of vicinity. Again, Lincoln Road is on the, along the westerly or easterly portion, and the property is on the western half of Lincoln Road. And again, the southwest G Street is to the north, and southwest Bridge Street is to the south, and Judy Lane kind of is, kind of dissects the property there. And again, the zone and acres remains the same. By way of background, the owner or property owner, Kelly A. Phillips, seeks an annexation of the property to connect to municipal suburb system, and this can be approved. It's a, in order to approve it, the, it is required to be annexed into the city, and this has become before you tonight. The property itself is within the city's urban growth boundary, and this, again, holds city zoning of R18. Pursuant to ORS Statute 22, or 222-1, or .125, the city can annex land without an election or vote or public hearing if 100% of the property owners consent to annexation. The annexation request is brought by a single property owner, and it's considered to be annexation by consent in accordance to our development code 5.065. Beginning in July 1st of '24, the property owner will be responsible to pay taxes, including property tax and future development of the lot, which will require to be consistent with city conditions and city development requirements. And future development may include extension of Judy Lane from the west to Lincoln Road, and must provide water and sewer. If approved tonight, the legal description and map are attached to the staff report, and the annexation ordinance will be sent to the county to be recorded. And, and this obviously will move the property from unincorporated to, into city limits. The call to action tonight is at the discretion of the council, and as noted, there are no costs associated with this annexation, but the collection and the process of city service will be, will change after annexation, and the amount of revenue will not. So hence the recommendation tonight is to adopt the ordinance to annex 630 Lincoln Road, map number 36-06-13 DC Tax Lot 100. And again, this is property is located on the western portion of Lincoln Road between southwest G and southwest Bridge Street into city limits. And behind you, behind me are the proposed alternatives. That concludes staff's report.
Thank you, Mark. Counsel, do you have any questions? No questions. Is the property owner here to speak on behalf of this?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Is anybody else wanting to speak on this issue? Please step forward and state your name and whether or not you are in the city limits.
Yeah, Doug Walker in city limits. One more chance here to, to, to repeat what I said earlier about staff time. The annexation process is fairly cumbersome and difficult for developers, and I'd like to encourage the idea of more staff time to address that issue. It's something that HAC is putting forward, but again, we need more staff to deal with it. There's quite a bit of legal stuff with city attorney that we need to push against the state laws and just exactly what we can do and get away with. And we don't know that without staff time. So the more staff time we can get on these housing issues, the better. Thank you. I encourage you to say yes to this.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wanted to speak on this issue? All right, we'll close the public hearing and turn it back to council. Oh, okay.
Hello, my name is Kim Fella. I do not live in the city, but I do live right down the road from that. And what I'm curious about is I noticed in that picture, there was a lot of standing water. And personally, my property gets flooded with the stormwater from the county because they won't obey ORS 549. So as I'm sitting there looking at that, I'm wondering, is that going to be incorporated into the city's stormwater system? Or is that stormwater going to be passed down to me? Because nobody else will do their jobs either. So I'm wondering about a riparian water act, or how that standing water would be eliminated or alleviated or, or transferred to somebody else. I just saw the water, and it caught my eye. I, I think that that's all in a FEMA floodway right there. So I'm just, I'm just worried about the water because it's grossly mishandled in Josephine County, and damaging personal parties like me. But that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll close a public comment and turn it over to council. Valerie?
I'll just say in answer to your question, wouldn't that, if that land were to be developed, then they would have to go through the stormwater and all the city actions dealing with that. But the annexation, people who live in the urban growth boundary are paying for public safety services, but they are not able to vote. So I'm always excited when I hear that people are wanting to annex into the city, because that, all it does is change the county going after to, I'm not so sure. And basically what it just does is that she will be able to get sewer services now, because that's city. The county doesn't have that. And she's still paying for public safety now. It's just going to be, she's going to be paying it through the county as opposed to getting a bill from our city every. So it's just, this is just the annexation. It has nothing to do with the development. So I will just say, I'm going to make a motion to move to adopt the ordinance annexing 630 Lincoln Road, map number lot 36-06-13-DC Tax Lot 100 into the Grants Pass city limits, and have it read by title only first reading.
Thank you. Seconded by Vanessa. Any discussion on this motion? All right, Valerie, you made the motion to approve. How do you vote?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
DJ?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Vanessa?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
An ordinance of the council of the city of Grants Pass annexing 630 Lincoln Road into the Grants Pass city limits.
Brian?
Same motion, second reading.
Seconded by Rick. Any discussion? Brian, you made the motion. How do you vote?
Yes.
Vanessa?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
DJ?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
An ordinance of the council of the city of Grants Pass annexing 630 Lincoln Road into the Grants Pass city limits.
Thank you. Next up is a resolution authorizing the sale of residential property on Southeast 8th Street. Augustus coming up for that one.
All right. Evening, Mayor, Council, members of the public. So we're here to talk about the sale of city real property on Southeast 8th Street. So a little bit why we're here. So absent alternative procedure for the sale of city property, Oregon Statute 221725 says that the city council shall publish notice of a proposed sale in the newspaper of general circulation, shall hold a public hearing concerning the sale prior to the sale. So we had this discussion already, and we're asked to move forward. So as part of that process, we needed to notice it, and now we're having a public meeting. So we also need to describe the nature of the proposed sale, the general terms, including an appraisal or evidence of the market value. And it has to be fully disclosed at the public hearing, and any resident of the city shall be given an opportunity to present written or oral testimony at that hearing. So the property that we're talking about is kind of nestled close to 8th Street and M. Now, I think in your packet, it says it's .23 acres. That is an error, and that is my error. It is actually .1 acres. I actually checked that against the assessor's office yesterday because it seemed off. So it is .1 acres, Tax Lot 6900. The zoning of this property is R4. We're having the asking price be at 68. Now, the reason the asking price was at this level is because that is what the assessor has for the real market value, not the assessed value, as the city is going to be exempt from property taxes. So the city received an offer in the amount of $70,000 from the Sabrina, Sabrina Gons Trust. The terms of the sale are all cash with no contingencies. So as you can see, it's 2,000 over asking. So the evidence of the market value, like I said, we didn't do an appraisal on this property. It's a very small sliver. And so instead, we utilize the real market values presented by the assessor's office. And as you can see, the real market value has actually declined from 22 to 23 by about the same amount of money, about $2,000. So this is the rationale for the asking price that was initially set. Your call to action is tonight, I'm sorry, your call to action date is tonight, and your call to action is at your discretion. Can adopt the resolution, provide direction to negotiate a modification to the sale, or do not proceed with the sale, with proposed motion behind me. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Augustus. Counsel, do you have any questions? No questions. All right. Is there anyone who wanted to speak on behalf of this topic? All right, please step forward to this mic and tell us your name and whether or not you live in the city limits.
My name is Bonnie McDonald, and I'm a resident of Grants Pass. And I was just wondering where the money came from to buy this property in the beginning, and also where will the money go? And if there's a possibility to put it towards the police department? Thank you.
I actually should have mentioned that in my presentation. So the money will go to the, I think it's an, it's a SDC. So it's going to have to go back into the fund from which it came initially. I, I don't remember the kind of SDC, but it's a system development charge. So it comes from that fund, and then when we sell the proceeds of that sale, we'll go back into that fund.
Thank you. All right, I'll close the public comment, turn it back to council for discussion. Brian?
Well, just to clarify, those funds are going, are going to go back into the Affordable Housing Development Charge.
Yes.
System Development Charge Incentive Program. So that's where those funds are going to be going back to. And I'm very happy that we're selling this property. It's a property that the, the city cannot utilize. It's .1 acre. So I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the sale of .1 acre residential property on Southeast 8th Street, map number 36-05-20-BB Tax Lot 6900.
Thank you. Seconded by Vanessa. Any discussion on the motion? Valerie?
I was just going to clarify the affordable housing. We have a, for the last couple of years, any property that has been sold, we have put into a incentive to, to, for people who are building affordable housing to get SDC reductions. So that has been a real priority of ours, and that is, so we're very excited when any of the property like that is no longer utilized, and we have sold several lots over the last several years, is going for that purpose. Once again, high priority is housing.
Any further discussion? All right, Brian, you made the motion to approve the sale. How do you vote?
Yes.
Vanessa?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
DJ?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes, for sure.
Motion passes eight to zero. And that one, we don't have to read the ordinance. It's a resolution. All right. Next up, Public Safety Funding Discussion. The moment you've all been waiting for. J.C. Rowley is our finance director. Whenever you're ready, J.C.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and the public. I'm here to talk about public safety funding. I have a hopefully brief presentation here for you tonight. The subject in summary, I'm going to go over the listening session that happened last week as far as January 25th. I'm going to go over the public safety funding need, public safety focus options, the timeline we are under, and hopefully a potential call to action tonight. So on Jan, January 25th, we went through some of the financial background. We also had either both of the chiefs come up and state their need and their current issues that they're facing. We went through the potential forecasted funding need. We went through some funding options, more so what council had been considering. And we even had a questions and answer back and forth with the community, and even a point for public comment. As I know you all can probably hopefully read this, there is a link on the city website. For those of you at home, hopefully you can pause your, your YouTube and screen and get that link. For those of you, there's three hours of really good information and a lot of people coming up and asking their questions on the issue. So generically, I'm kind of going to summarize what we talked about on the 25th. As you can see with the orange line, public safety, we're outspending our revenues. We had this limitation with Measure 5, 47, and 50, really limiting property tax growth and our revenues to a maximum 3%. Generically speaking, inflation has been between 8 and 5% the last couple of years. So mathematically, the city is behind as far as funding public safety. And I think that potential gap in the next budget cycle for 2025 is approximately $7 billion. that potential gap in the next budget cycle for 2025 is approximately $7 million. To further define what the issue is, in 2025, we are looking at the potential funding gap of our current service level at $3.3 million. There is an ask of city staff to add about eight public safety FTE that are connected to public safety, and that is another $1.5 million for a total of $4.8 million. To fully fund public safety, there is about a $3.7 million difference between the two. And as you can see, even if we get a $3.3 million funding source in the bottom left, we still have a gap that the general fund is still going to have to subsidize public safety. And that is at that $3.7 million-ish gap. And that is a sliding scale in between, depending on what level of service council may want to deem. As a brief recap, and one of the handouts that was provided in the forum, there is a rate structure for the potential utility fee for public safety at approximately $3.3 million. Council had gone down the path of using the transportation model as the closest correlated model as far as the calls for service for public safety. When we look at the calls for service, we're about 50% residential, 50% commercial. Transportation model is the closest to that, at being 60% residential and 40% commercial. As we looked at other rate structures, they were highly slanted towards the residential, and so council deemed that transportation model potentially was more closely related to the calls for service. I know this is small on the screen, but we also went off the classification of what is a commercial A, B, C, D, and so on for the transportation model. In theory, everybody starts off as a commercial A, as a business. However, your business type, the size of your business, and the propensity for you to draw traffic is where you fit into this model. This information is also on our city website. We also provided council with a couple different funding matrices as to maybe do a combination of multiple funding sources. We've looked at the transportation public, public safety utility fee, as well as a combination of a potential food and beverage tax, with the addition of those FTE over a potential five-year phase-in plan. We also looked at a sales tax with a combination of the utility fee as well as a different option. And as today is February 7th, we are coming into the budget season. We're already in the budget season, and we are coming into a little bit of a time crunch, as our next discussion typically happens at the beginning of March, which is the LB discussion, which leads to the general fund revenues and projects that may be contributed out of the general fund. And without clear financial direction for public safety, which is in the general fund, this will delay this process and leave staff in a kind of uncertain area. So from a staffing perspective, we would like to see a call to action tonight for our budgetary needs. And the call to action is to provide staff with direction to prepare either an ordinance on any one of the funding mechanisms. I don't know if there's any questions that haven't been asked at this point, but I will take your questions at this time.
Thank you, J.C. Council, do you have any questions? Rob?
Yeah, we, you know, you've been copied on all the emails back and forth with Jay Meredith and council, and you've been a part of those also as well, J.C. There was one point that was brought up today, and I'm not clear about. We've heard several times from the chiefs that it can take a year to actually get an officer or fireman, you know, actually on the street, you know, working by themselves, from the time you actually try to advertise for the position, background check, you know, the whole, the whole deal, the academy. So Jay made the point in one of his emails that even whatever, whatever method, if the council were to choose a method and a level of funding, it's quite possible that the first year of that, those officers or firemen wouldn't even be in the positions yet. So would we necessarily need to fund the first year fully? Because there's no way that the first year of those positions, even if we commit to them, there wouldn't be funds being paid out for those positions because they wouldn't even be hired and trained yet. Do you understand my question?
I think so. There's a lot to unpack there. First off, I want to say I'm very grateful that I live in a community where people out in the community are very passionate about their public safety funding, as well as how their community operates, and that they would give that kind of input back to the council. I would say that yes, there is maybe a timing variance potentially, but what that timing variance is with direction with council, potentially you could start the process sooner rather than later, and as well as have another policy adopted as far as an over hire policy, which would help with some of this turnover rate that we may be seeing. Yes, it does take us time to train all of our staff, does not necessarily police and fire, but at the same time, once you do get them on board, there is the potential that we would be paying them from that point on forward.
Any additional questions? Valerie?
Yeah, I just, I just want clarification on the eight positions that we are planning and saying that we need, that those include the three firefighters, correct, and five other public safety. I just want clarification of what those eight are.
I could do that.
Three firefighters, three, three police officers, and crime analyst.
And the eighth would be the facilities person dedicated to our public safety facilities.
Any other questions? All right. We're going to open this up to, for public comment, and I know we have a number of people who want to speak on this issue tonight. First, I know that there are a number of people who also want to talk about public safety regarding the parks or other police issues, and this portion of the discussion is only regarding funding. So if you're here to talk about some other public safety issue, please save that for later in the evening. When we do public comment, you need to come forward, state your name, let us know whether or not you live in the city. You will have three minutes to speak, and when the yellow light goes off, it means you have 30 seconds left, so you don't need to panic, but you do need to start wrapping up, so that when the red light goes off, you need to stop. And we do have a lot of people here who want to speak tonight, so please wrap up quickly. I don't like to cut people off, but I will when that red light starts flashing. So with that said, I have a few people who have turned in some blue papers. I'll call on you first, and then other people can come up afterwards. I have first David Martin.
I'm David Martin. I own Label Dudes. It's a print shop a couple buildings down. I'm want to just kind of make some comments on the sales tax idea. The sales tax, sorry, not a great public speaker. The sales tax is not a new idea for Grants Pass. Unfortunately, it's been tried a few times and been soundly defeated twice in the last 10 years. How can you, the elected officials, that are supposed to represent the electorate, bypass the choices of the electorate, not by a small margin and a small percentage, but an overwhelming majority, and work to impose a very poor thought-out solution that will not be able to fix the problems, but patch the issue for a very short time? We all know the funding of 1.5% will grow and grow rapidly, and because of the costs are outpacing both the cost, cost of living and inflation, it is unfair to drop the majority of the responsibility and the labor of this on the local small businesses, which in the past few years had, were adversely affected by the shutdowns, and are still in the process of growing back to a pre-COVID business environment. Don't do it. It's unwise. It's unfair, and it does not solve the problem. That's basically what I got to say.
Failed to read all the rules earlier, one of which, no applause, but Julie Hartford.
Thank you. I'm Julie Hartford, and I live in Grants Pass. Thank you for taking public safety seriously, because I know you all do. I understand how hard you've looked for solutions to the type of funding options available. I can't say often enough how lucky we are in Grants Pass to have such professional and competent fire and police personnel. I personally prefer the utility fee funding option, but any vote to fully fund public safety will have my support. Fire and police officers voluntarily put their lives at risk for public safety. I believe we are morally obligated to fund basic levels of backup officers to keep them safe. Thank you.
Alan Hartford.
Hi, Alan Hartford. I'm a city resident, and I think you all know that I've been up here supporting public safety funding for a long time. I highly encourage you to do something. Something needs to be done. I've said it over and over again. I've weighed in with you, with my opinions on you, on ways that we can get there, and I fully trust you to make the right decisions to move forward. My key point is, is that you need to do something, and I think we all know that. So I think you need to hear the support from at least my family that we do support that. I am concerned that you guys have received some very negative comments, and it appalls me that there are people out there that would do things like that. There's no place in our society to threaten people because we have a disagreement. We can all disagree without being disagreeable. That doesn't seem to be the case nowadays. My key point, though, again, is you all need to make a decision, and I support that decision. You all have shown that you've thought about this very strongly, and I, you know, there's nothing else I can add to that discussion, I feel. I do want to say on a personal note, after 34 years in public safety, I'm appalled by the people who come up here and say they support public safety in one breath. In the very next breath, they say, "We won't fund it." And they don't give you any answers or any solutions. I've tried to give you some solutions. I've talked with you. I've talked with, I've sent emails to all of you. I feel I've been heard, and I feel it's now time to make a decision. But those who want to come up here and say they support public safety and then won't fund it, that just, it's incompatible to me. So I appreciate what you're doing. You have my support, and thank you very much.
Nancy Lester?
Hi, I'm Nancy Lester, and I live in Grants Pass. I can't pretend to understand all of the options that you guys have looked at. I can only trust that you have looked at them in depth. My concern is about the budgeting. So we're talking about $7 million shortfall next year, but the following year, we can assume it's going to be 5% more because of inflation merit increases that have already been improved or get approved every year. So how is that built into the assumptions of how much it's going to cost us in the future? I can only assume that whatever gets passed next year is going to get increased the following year, the following year, the following year. And I, as a citizen, would just like to know what that, what those assumptions are, so I can plan in my own personal budgeting how much I'm going to have to pay for these services in the future. There's no doubt we're going to have to pay for it some way, but I'd like to have some understanding of what that would be and how that would be calculated. Thank you.
All right, that was the blue cards I had on this topic. So anybody else wanting to speak on this issue, please step forward and state your name and let us know whether or not you live in the city. Just line up.
Not very often I get to take cuts. Hi, I'm Faith Mall. You've seen me here before. I'm a citizen of Grants Pass. The numbers that were just brought up as far as looking long-term, that's been my concern all along, as I've evaluated your budget and the cuts that have taken place, the general fund sharing, trying to take care of the deficit that the poor police chief has had to deal with. Even through accreditation, it looks good the way you're sharing the information, but it's still lousy information, no matter how you lay it out there. With the increase in the future, I see that that is going to be, we need to really be looking at what's a permanent solution. I'm not sure that this is fully permanent, but it's better than what's been going on. But then you've had to make decisions and guesses on what's going to happen post-COVID, and all those, the hits with grant money going away really quickly. Somebody's got to balance a budget somewhere, and they weren't going to let you. So that's just how it's going to lay out. But I do want to lay out one point. Whatever money I save every month goes to the homeless, the needy kids. We've donated over 600 books to local school libraries, over 100 stuffed backpacks to kids that need them in the school districts, over 100 blankets, over, I mean, I'm just, today I unloaded about 25 caps, 25 pairs of gloves, 25 pairs of boot socks, et cetera, et cetera, 100 pair of shoes. Add it up in your head, even at my really great shopping, I'm not telling anybody how I do it. You don't need to arrest me. But with the fee that might come, and I know that's a decision you have to make, somebody's going to get the short end of the stick, and I have a hunch I'll be one of them, but when I do, take, keep it in mind, those homeless that I've been trying to at least keep somebody warm through the winter, some little kid to keep their feet warm at night, I'm not going to be spending that. It's going to make his job harder, because he's going to have that many more people struggling that he's got to respond to. Please consider the additional work that's going to be on his plate than what you're looking at the numbers today as you're moving forward. It's not just going to be 5%. I don't know what it would be, but keep that in mind. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sandy Rourke. I live in Grants Pass. I have a suggestion that actually would help our public safety fund, and that would be for the DA to actually hold criminals accountable for their illegal actions that caused them to be arrested in the first place, instead of releasing the criminals back out on the streets to be arrested again and again and again for the same crimes. Thank you.
Again, Bonnie McDonald, citizen of Grants Pass. And I'm just kind of curious, whose idea was it to posture Grants Pass to be the leader in homelessness? Because it has cost us a lot of money, and we don't have it.
Want to remind everybody, we're talking about funding now. We can talk about other public safety issues later.
We're not talking about police department funding?
We're talking about funding now, yes. State your name and let us know whether or not you live in the city, please.
I live in the city, and I'm representing 19,000 people today, gentlemen, ladies, that have been denying your levies. You refuse to listen to what everybody is saying. Your boss.
I'm asking if you gave your name.
No, I did not yet. You put a fabrication of fear, trying to blackmail these people in the community with lies. And that can't be, that can't be tolerated, gentlemen. Cannot. You are not in fear of your life with 19,000 people telling you exactly, "Maybe we ought to burn down your buildings." That's crazy childish actions, my friends. It's not a threat until somebody actually makes a move on you like you guys have. When you cross county lines and you use the tax money that we use for our law enforcement to go threaten somebody's life because you got cut off in traffic, you have an ego issue that you need to control. This has nothing to do with your funding or anything else. It has something to do with him doing his job. When you actually refuse three times outside law enforcement agencies for evidence, you become a domestic terrorist threat. You understand what that is? This isn't about defunding. This is about building a community. And when you have something like this, it shows that his people, his little minions, my employees, can do the same damn thing, and that's unacceptable in my book. You either clean out your nest because you told me you couldn't do anything. I'm here to tell you, you guys will do something. All due respect, Mr. Warren, because that's how you, I always address you, because I could have said all this crap. Let's burn down Daily Carrier. Personally, I think, I would love it. My dark heart right now, I think I would dance in the streets. Because when your paper blackmailed me- Because when your paper blackmailed me to keep my mouth shut, and I told you back then, I'm telling you now, you fund that man, you're telling the rest of these people in the community that we can seize your assets and cripple your community. That's not cool. That kills me as a businessman. That kills you as a community. Step up and do better.
All right, is there anyone else here who wants to speak about public safety funding?
I'm not affiliated with that man in any way. I don't even know who he is. My name's Aliva Herrera. I'm a county resident, but I have a Grants Pass city address. I just wondered where we're at on the marijuana taxing. Don't know where we're at on it, but I just keep wondering that, doesn't it sound like a good idea to tax all these dispensaries to fund police? Just throwing that back out there, because I know this is an election year, and that putting it to the vote usually produces some results there, too. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
My name is Mike Pelfrey. I am a Grants Pass resident. So I will tell you personally that I think that, that A, our police department does need support, however, not in the manner that you guys have presented. A sales tax, I don't care whether it's a sales tax or a food and beverage tax, in my opinion, is like committing financial suicide for this city. The reason we're in this position is because you, as leaders, have really screwed up. You failed us. We do our jobs, we pay our bills, we go to work every day and do everything that we're supposed to do to support our family. The least that you can do is do your job as leaders and make sure that your budget is balanced. So somewhere along the line, someone hasn't really done their job. The other thing that concerns me is that, you know, we keep hearing about the funding for police. Yes, we do need funding for police. Again, not with a sales tax. But the reason I think that we need funding for police is because, as leaders, you have turned our city into a cesspool of vandalism. And I mean that. Have you driven around this city lately? It's embarrassing. I'm embarrassed to call Grants Pass my home now. I didn't feel that way in 2016, but the reason I'm embarrassed is because of your leadership. And when I say your leadership, I really mean your leadership. I want you to think about when you guys took office and the shape of this city, financially, emotionally, our homeless situation. Are you kidding me? You think you've done a good job? I beg to differ. You should all be fired. Unfortunately, I know you're volunteered and you're elected officials, but if you were on the payroll and I was your boss, I would fire your ass so fast you wouldn't even know what hit you. I pay my bills. I budget my bottom line. That's the least you can do for all of these citizens out here. Okay? So again, I've got 30 seconds. I challenge you to drive around our town, go to one of our parks, and look at the vagrancy that takes place, and then think about the number, when you're laying in bed, think about the number of sirens that go off at night. I used to live in Arizona and never heard sirens like this, and there's 3, 4 million people. You should be embarrassed for the way that you have run this city into the damn ground. Thank you.
All right, everybody. We need to maintain the decorum of the meeting here, and cheering isn't allowed. I wanted to just remind everybody, it's really important right now, if you want the council to listen to this issue, we're talking about public safety funding, we're not talking about other public safety-related issues, and we need to stay focused. Braxton, please, go ahead.
My name is Bracken Sharp. I'm a city resident, and I'm the vice president of the Grants Pass Professional Firefighters, IAFF Local 3564. I have a couple of things I just want to talk on. One, obviously, a decision needs to be made. I think everyone on the council understands that, and there is not one decision that will please everybody. And I think it's been very apparent that there's a lot of opposition. This is government. You're never going to be able to please everybody. What you guys do have is education. You have the elected positions to make decisions for the betterment of the city. If you call everyone's attention to the vision statement here, Grants Pass is a healthy, vibrant place to live, work, and play, a city connecting people. I'm, I'm reading. This is my time.
I'll have you removed from the room if you keep making outbursts.
Grants Pass is a healthy place, healthy, vibrant place to live, work, and play, a city connecting people to people with thriving economic, cultural, and recreational opportunities. As we hear, obviously, there's a lot of people that don't agree that that is true anymore. What needs to be made is a decision. If I had the answer, if the Grants Pass Professional Firefighters had the answer, we'd be bugging you since day one, but we don't. What we do have is the support for you guys to make this decision. There will be opposition, but you have the education, what, 20-plus meetings going over this in grave detail over every single funding option, and you've gotten this far. You guys have sat through the last two years' budgets, and you've pulled meat off of the bone until your fire and police departments are just bone, and continue to call on us every day. Like Mike just said, we're running 24/7, 365 for the people of Grants Pass, and we love to do it. We love to do it, but we need help desperately. Desperately, 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 desperately do we need help. And I've been barking this for a long time, and I think you all know that, you know, where I stand on all of this. But what I will ask of you is to make a decision. You have the points when people call you and say, "Hey, why is this happening?" You have the education pieces to educate your constituents that have elected you in this position to make these decisions. The time has come. It's done. It's time to stop messing around. We need something now, because when the next budget cycle comes in shortly, as the finance director already showed, you've sat through the last two. I'm sure all of you in your own heads have thought about the doomsday of what's going to happen if we don't have additional funding. It's not good, and there's no way that all of us, as a whole, not just council, not just the firefighters, but the community, can all come together to achieve that vision statement. Let's be on the right side of history here and do our jobs.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wanting to speak tonight?
Hello, I'm Ginny Steg Miller.
Ginny, can you pull the mic down closer to your mouth?
Thank you. I live in the county, own properties in the city. I understand this situation didn't happen overnight, just over, just over a few years or even over a decade. It started way back in the 1990s. So many people don't understand the complicated topic and many year, in the many years the council have grappled with this issue. I have just one question. I hear many people ask a time or two, why the chief, while the chief has cut back and the fire department has cut back, can somebody clarify if all city departments have actually cut back? With a $207 million budget for the city, can each department give up, say, 5% to 7% of their department budgets? Maybe not Jason. We need clean water. But, I mean, you understand what I'm saying, to pay for public safety, the chief and fire have given up so much, and maybe the other budgets, the other departments need to take a look and see what they can give back to public safety for the citizens. Maybe some of those services could go to contract work and city employees. And I get it, that would be so hard. It would be gut-wrenching to do that, but it's the way that business works. Maybe our government should work the same or similar. Finally, if the, if the last option has to be a sales tax, some of you know, I say, "Well", then it has to be. And I hate the water bill feature, but at least you've gotten the, the cost down for those most vulnerable. I went to Santa's house a few weeks ago at the North Pole, and believe it or not, even Santa charges a sales tax, although the state of Alaska does not. If you go get served ice cream at Santa's house, he charges a sales tax. So, I mean, we don't like it, but be the leaders you can be. Thank you so much for all you do for us. Thank you, guys.
Step forward, whoever wants to go next.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Nugent, and I also live in the city of Grants Pass, and I listened, I came to the meeting last month discussing all of these issues, and I felt like the proposal was really well-presented, and although I was against a sales tax or a food and beverage tax, I feel like the solution, it sounds like the last two times it's gone to vote, both of the times have been shut down. And if that keeps happening, then we don't have a budget for our fire and safety. So I do feel like it needs to be a blended rate. I don't like the water bill, because as I think Councilor Lovelace pointed out last time, that that only includes 10% of the population. And so if we want everyone to be invested in the solution for Grants Pass, then we really have to blend that rate and really go across all, everything. I think the sales tax and a little portion of the water bill is the best solution. And then I also wanted to say, I feel like, although that this isn't related to the parks, and I won't bring too much up right now, I do think that part of that allocation and that 1.1% or 1.5% should be budgeted to go towards our parks and specifically to public safety in our parks. I think that that needs to be its own portion of the budget, and that needs to be firm and written in the budget, period. If you're going to tax the people and you're going to charge the first-only tax in Oregon and the first-only city tax in a small town like ours, I lived in Chicago and Phoenix, and they have city taxes. It's normal to have city taxes. But in our little town, it's really rare in, in any city to have a tax. So if we're going to do it, has to be, it has to be something that does not increase over years. It can't be something that three years from now, oh, our budget's over again, so we need to increase that. It needs to be guaranteed for 10, 20 years. It can't be something that fluctuates. And then the second thing I feel like strongly about is that we have to fund, the police need their own resources for our parks until our state changes their legislation. And at this point, that's neither anybody's problem in here, but it is something that we all face and that we have to be able to go full force and actually really have the budget to allocate correctly to get the parks managed, period. The end.
My name's Victoria Marshall, and I am a city resident. This issue is a matter of public trust, and the public does not trust you. So if you choose to unilaterally tax them, they will trust you even less. So don't tax the people without a vote, period. But looking down at these funding mechanisms, a food and beverage tax will destroy restaurants, and so it's a self-defeating tax. A sales tax, Oregon is very anti-sales tax. People in Portland don't vote for sales taxes. It's not something that Oregon does or has ever wanted to do, and Oregon votes down sales taxes every single time. Do not be the one, the first to do it. It would be a very bad idea. The utility fee, as I mentioned, seemed to make the most sense to me, but people have objections to that because they think it's the burden on a smaller portion of people. And you guys have not identified what the other is, so I would ask that if there is something other that you, other as identified by the council that you discussed that, the people don't trust the city to fix the problems that have been created because of the injunction, and I've said it before more than once, please stop permanently putting into place mandates for temporary problems. This is a temporary problem. The entire state, our governor decided that fentanyl is an issue now, only in Portland, but, but it's a start. These issues are going to be self-correcting, and you're talking about putting a permanent tax in that hurts the people, and that will further divide the people from their government, and it will make them trust you. The trust level, which is already low, will be negative beyond belief. So don't tax the people without a vote. I love the idea, someone came up here earlier and talked about cutting across the board, but you got, you're just going to have to find another way to do it. Don't, don't tax the people without a vote. They've already told you no, so you know what the people, many times, so you know what the people have to say about it, and I really thank you for your time, and I do appreciate the difficult position you are in. Thank you.
Next.
Hi, my name is Sandra. I do live in Grants Pass. I'm here, I want to speak personally and professionally as well. Personally, I moved here from central Oregon because I could not afford to live in central Oregon. They don't have sales tax, but it's ridiculous. Grants Pass is still affordable, but you put in a sales tax, it makes it a lot less affordable, and I had to take a 40% pay cut to be able to live in, or to be able to move here, not to be able to, but to move here, I took a 40% pay cut. And Grants Pass is not a rich place. I don't make a lot of money. You drive around, it's, there's not a lot of money in Grants Pass, and, you know, you're going to be hurting a lot of businesses by incorporating a sales tax. You know, 12 bucks a month isn't going to kill me for the utility fee, but I'm also a commercial property manager. I manage about 20 commercial properties in Grants Pass. Most of them are owned by mom and pops. It's, you know, they have, they care about the tenants that they have. A lot of them have chosen not to raise rents on their tenants because their tenants cannot afford it at this point, because their sales are low. I have tenants that can't pay their rent on time because they're just not making the money. I have a lot of, sorry, I lost my train of thought. The owners also, you know, I saw that the commercial utility tax is going to be significant. And for tenants that are triple, or that are triple-net, where they pay their own utilities, that's not a concern for me, but a lot of our owners are, have gross leases with their tenants, which means that's going to be absorbed by these owners at 100 and something dollars a month. And some of these owners just aren't making that much money off these properties. I mean, there, some of these properties are just, no offense if you own them, but they're crap. And the tenants are hurting, the owners are hurting, and this isn't going to be good for the community. It's, sales tax is just not going to be good. Restaurant tax is not going to be good. I won't eat in Ashland because they charge a restaurant tax. Won't do it. So, you know, it's, it's your choice. You can hurt the community further by this, or you can try and find another solution. And I did like the idea of taxing the, the smoke shops, you know? Why not? Syntax, great idea. That's all.
Did anyone else want to speak?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Unlike others before me, who I respect their opinion, I'm not here to berate you and the job that you've done. I am here to oppose the restaurant tax and the sales tax, but at the same time, I'm here to applaud you for the leadership you've taken. I've sat on many city committees, different work groups. I had the pleasure of attending Commissioner Riker's session when he asked for public input. We're better than this, you guys. You know what? We've come together, we've made strides, we've passed the levy for 14 years in a row. We've had some amazing conversations on what we need, where we need to be, but we all know this is not the answer, and passing at the council level is not the answer. There are 241 incorporated cities in Oregon, and you're telling me we're in last place and have to enact a sales tax? I mean, the food and beverage tax that you talk about and point to three, two of them are coastal communities with populations of less than 2,000, with Portland as a feeder market. I'm proud of the tourism industry we've created, but we're not even close to those communities in comparison to the needs that they increase in their population. The other one is Ashland, and I'll remind you that while that tax has been in place for a while, their voters just asked to repeal it. They voted it down. So we would essentially be the only city of our size. So we would essentially be the only city of our size. And I see you question that, Mr. Riker. It is set to sunset. They said no. I'll provide you with the information. It won't sunset till 2030, but they accomplished the goals that they had with it and the community said no more. We can't do it at this time. When I sit up here and I hear the chiefs talk about how tired and how exhausted they are, I'm not berating them. I'm not berating the job they do. I own a small business. I'm freaking tired. I'm exhausted. I'm broke. I can't afford this. And I ask you guys, you know, there are some people that are going to get up here and berate the job that you do to represent our community with no pay. I'm not that guy, but I know we're better than this. Do not do this at the council level. Allow us to continue to work, come together cohesively, don't do something that's going to be divisive. We're seeing it happen and start tonight, you know? If you rewind, and I ask you, between now, if you pass it tonight and the next reading, go back to your July discussion and listen to your own voices when there was a fear of whether or not the levy was going to pass and you talked about reenact, or putting it back on the ballot and the damage in trust that you would have with your own community if you went to a sales tax or food and beverage tax. Go back and watch your July meeting, please. But just know, I'm not mad at you. I appreciate the job that you do. We're better than this.
Hi, I'm Adriana. I've been here before. I came to listen and learn session and I thought you guys all articulated yourselves so well and made a lot of sense to me. For those who weren't here, I've been a district attorney in Grants Pass, I've been a defense attorney in Grants Pass, and I've been a victim of crime in Grants Pass. And I've heard a lot of comments today about how this would not be good for the city or it's going to cost so much money and that's fair, but I can tell you of one crime that I was a victim of, my window was smashed in my Jeep. And it cost more as a victim to replace that window in that one day than it's going to cost me all year for what you guys are asking for the increase on the property, on the water bill and in sales tax. That's just one crime. And because I've been in this criminal justice system, I know how many crimes occur in this county every day, in the city every day, and I know how many people in this room are going to become victims of crime soon. You guys will know, if you don't already, exactly how expensive it is to be a victim of crime. And I can tell you, I've watched Cave Junction deteriorate, as much as I love that area and it's beautiful, we have a disproportionate number of murders in this area. And I can tell you, defunding the law enforcement, defunding the police, if Netflix wanted to make a movie about it, they can come to Cave Junction and if you guys have your way, they can come to Grants Pass and make the movie about it too. So I say, do whatever it takes. Thank you.
Anybody else?
No, this isn't, my name is Jake Hang. I'm a citizen here. The problem is deeper than just the city and I think us as citizens are re-contacting upstairs our federal government. Because I'll tell you this, who needs $100 billion? And they're not getting taxed on it properly. I think if you remember, it was 2017 where they did a tax cut, they were getting taxed 35% and it went down to 21%. The problem's deeper than just local cities. It's the federal government. And I don't care what side of the aisle you're on, they are failing us, not you. Us as a city, we have to figure out how to come up with this money. It's all about taxing us, right? Why aren't they taxing the billionaires? That's my point for you.
Is there anybody else wanting to speak on this issue?
Kim, yes, I'm a citizen. So I wonder, who makes the budget? Who sits down and looks at the budget? I remember when I was a little girl, watching my mother at the kitchen table with her papers spread out, doing taxes, balancing, how is she going to feed me and my brothers? Do any of you ever sit and look at the budget like it's your own with the fear of, can I eat? Can I feed my children? Or does it just get tossed out the window and there's no care whatsoever because you're gouging everybody else for the money? And it's not really coming from your pockets, maybe a small portion. But where is the genuine concern for other people's money? I fail to see it. I'm not against funding for safety, but it's really hard to get people to rise up for an occasion for something like that when you see needles and feces everywhere, when kids can't use the parks. I'm all for law enforcement, abso freaking lutely, but what is everybody's salaries? How come all of the fees within Josephine County for city services or permits or building or anything are so much more than every other city or county in Oregon? Has anybody compared the prices to what we are taxed here for versus the rest of Oregon? It's freaking atrocious. What the hell, where is all this money going? We're taxed at a higher rate than the rest of Oregon. My mortgages all went up, everything else went up. Pacific Power rates just went up 11%. Everybody's rates are go up. How do you all feel when decisions are made for you that impact you without your input? I'm going to go out on a limb and think it sucks because it sucks for me and I know it sucks for the rest of the people. I want to go back to what we were talking about earlier. I asked questions about the house being annexed in the city. I spoke about the water problem and that was completely ignored, so I just want to be on the record saying that that was an R18. They're getting on city services. You think they're not going to develop? When that development takes place on that parcel, I hope that it's following the guidelines for floodways. Santa and his sales tax, that's an option. That's a choice. It's not getting shoved down your throat. You have to go see Santa and you have to pay a sales tax. This is not a choice, what you're doing to us. Oregon doesn't want sales tax. We're one of the few states left. You guys pride yourself on Grants Pass. Oh, it's wonderful, it's the climate, but this is not how you do it. Don't you want people to be proud and happy to live here? I'm not even from here. And pretty soon, you're going to have to replace "it's the climate" with "it's the communism." Please don't do the sales tax. And besides that, the food and beverage tax, my God, the people, the restaurant owners, just getting done with COVID, how many shut down and then you're going to do this to them again? And God only knows what in the hell is going to come up this year with election year, right? Disease X? They're going to get shafted again. Don't do it to everybody.
Anybody else?
Holly Morton. I live in Josephine County with property in Grants Pass. I think we all know that 110 has just led to a scourge in our community and a huge expense. I think if we take, put a pencil to that, we're going to realize that that creates a lot of the problems that we now have. I want to compliment the police department because I think there's been some amazing police work done in this town in the last couple of weeks. If you hear about things that are going on, I mean, those guys are on point and we do need to support them. But I'm very worried about the sales tax because I think that chases businesses away and businesses are part of the tax base for the county. So the last thing we need to do is be making a hostile environment for our businesses. We need to be very business-friendly right now, support them in any way that we can. The utility tax, I know puts a burden on everyone, but it does spread it out a little bit. I think it's probably a little bit more fair than a sales tax, which creates a burden for the businesses themselves. Most of the people in this town all get the same opportunity to have assistance from the police. I'm going to go out on a limb and I'm sure I'll have a lot of darts thrown at me about this one, but you know, a lot of the people that are in the parks using fentanyl and all that kind of thing, they are costing the city tremendous amount of money. What if we just don't feel the need to fix people who have ruined their own lives? What if we just don't feel that we have to have multiple Narcon or whatever that is, visits? What if we just don't do it? And let them deal with their own drug addiction problems? If they feel like they need a program or something else, fine, but we keep reviving and reviving and reviving the same people that are laying waste to our city. Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name is George Castle. I am a resident of the community. I, it's the first time I've ever come to a meeting. I've been a little, I try to read paper when it comes out and get some information about what's going on. I kind of, in my opinion, and I've only been in the community three and a half years, I hear these numbers and last week was a different set of numbers. You know, tonight, we're talking about eight new personnel and however many millions to cover that, you know, through one of these actions. Last week, you know, there was an article concerning what potentially you guys really need is 29 people at some point, you know? And the number was, you know, 18-plus million dollars, you know? And when I do some quick math, it's a lot of hundreds of thousands of dollars for each new employee, you know? And so I'm reading that and I, I support these guys and, you know, and I want this community to be a safe community. And I know that the sales tax has failed in the past, but it hasn't maybe failed in the past because people don't really, you know, they've not given, been given the information needed to make a, you know, a judgment whether it really is good for them or not, you know? Like, has there been enough information so that they can understand it? You know, when you're just talking, when you're throwing around, you know, 12 million, 18 million, you know, those are crazy numbers, you know? I'd like to see us get the people we need now, but also in the future. And I am in favor of a sales tax because then not just, you know, not just people that live in town, but people passing through the town are going to help cover the cost of it because ultimately if they're in a car crash or something, driving through town, our services, you know, cover them. So I just think it's a more fair way to, to spread the cost out. So, thank you.
Hello, I'm Michelle. I live in the city of the Grants Pass. I own and operate a local, small catering business. We've been open for about three years. Luckily, we're able to stay open through COVID. It was not easy. The restaurant, food and beverage tax that we're proposing here has no cap that I've seen. In three to five years, we could be up to 15% as to what we start to. I grew up serving in this industry, being in this industry, putting money back into this industry, seeing how it has raised and supported our town and it will just kill so many restaurants that just made it out of the pandemic and were just able to hire and just able to get new buildings and re, who get new seating, get new flooring, whatever they needed in their, in their businesses. And a citywide sales tax is just going to, it's just going to spread it on everyone a little evenly, but it's not going to save the issue. I just wish that you guys could work with the local business owners who know how to spread a budget, know how to do something and try to come up with a different option. Not putting it to a vote and us turning it down multiple times is not the answer. And I do plead that we try to find another answer. I do believe that we need to support our public safety. I think that mental health is a serious issue in our community and surprisingly, all the facilities that help with this are getting shut down, but that's a whole nother issue for another day. I just really propose that you guys really think seriously about this before doing it because it would really crush not only my business where I'm actually able to be home with my children and do their homework and help them grow so that I can run my own business and try to work in this community, but just everyone else that this would affect from every single small business in this town. They're all beautiful people that want to pay their taxes and be here and own homes and we're just trying to survive. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Reka Brown, Grants Pass. I believe that you should go with the tax that will make the most difference, that will actually fund our public safety. And that tax is a sales tax, a general sales tax. Please don't do, make, just, you know, don't make the restaurants have a special tax of their own. It's hard enough to make money in a restaurant. And our finance director went and showed that there's no way a restaurant tax could pay for all our public safety that we need to get. And the same pretty much goes with the fee on our utility bill. By the way, we did vote down a public safety utility, you did. And now it seems that we're going to just have a fee on our bill regardless of whether it's a utility or not. And along with all the rules, I'm pretty sure that we're in that ordinance, just going to have a utility without a utility name on our utility bill. And it won't last when I, when we pass the rate payer's utility, rate board, which, who will remove it from our utility bills. That is in the measure. So we don't want a temporary fee on our utility bill. We don't want a permanent one either. You go around and ask people in their homes like I do when I'm petitioning, you will get earful about all the extra charges on our bill. And that one is just bound to go up and up and up, unlike the others, they go up a little bit at a time, but no, it's going to take jumps to make any difference at all. No, we should have a sales tax and tax the tourists and tax the homeless and tax the nonprofits. Yes, that lady who is buying all this stuff for, you know, to give away to people, she can at the same time support our police, our fire and our community service officers. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Diana. I live in the city. Please don't do a sales tax. I would drive to Medford to avoid the sales tax, which would take away all the money that I make from the local city. Not smart, not wise, but I'm that opposed to it. I'm on a limited budget and so I can't afford a higher water bill. I don't go out to eat because I can't afford to go out to eat. I've got limited resources, as do a lot of people in this town. I believe in the police department. I think that should be the first thing out of the budget, period. And I went to a meeting at The Flag and I forget his name, I call him Mr. Burgermeister Meister Burger, because his name is similar to that. But I asked him point blank, isn't the responsibility of the government, city government, county government, whichever, isn't your first and foremost responsibility the safety of the people? And instead of yes or no, he said, oh, well, you would think. What kind of an answer is that? Yes, it should be the first and foremost responsibility. Then all the fluff, then all the additions, the added sidewalks that we're doing, the big roundy-roundies. All of that stuff, all the updates to the city can be done after you take care of the people. Please don't increase our rates and our fees and our taxes. That's all.
Brenda Sisson, Josephine County. I don't live in Grants Pass, but I do bring my money to Grants Pass and I do spend my money here. 1980s when I lived here or moved here. And I love Grants Pass, I raised my children here. But I tell you, and it's just me, if you impose this without a vote upon the people, I will never spend another red dime in this city. I can go Amazon, I can go small stores that are outside of Grants Pass. I would spend a little bit more money for those little stores that are out in the country. I would spend a little bit more money for those little stores that are out in the country. I would do that, just on principle. I'd be stubborn. I will never spend another red dime unless you take this to the vote of the people. But to unilaterally put this on the people is not right. All during 2023, I used to come to the city council meetings and there were, we can have a city, we can have tax, we, we don't have to go to the people. I heard this. And now somebody's getting their, you know, little dream, you're gonna, you're actually considering doing this. It's not right. It's dictatorship when, when, when the council goes above the wishes of the people. You should be ashamed of yourself, actually. You squander money, millions of dollars, you'll do these, all these other projects. You do boondoggles. And then you say, we gotta cover money, we got, what we can nickel and dime our public, our hardworking people of Grants Pass or, or the people of Josephine County that comes into Grants Pass that spends money. And they say, okay, we can get money from vacationers. Oh, who? Who are they? We haven't seen them in a long time. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mark?
Hello, everybody. I'm Lance Breslin. I live out in the outskirts of town. I own a small business in town, Rogue Valley Security. I guess I just kinda came here to kinda not agree with the sales tax, not go to a vote, kinda on the newer end of this, finding out all about these things. So I met a lot of good people in this town installing security systems, foreign cameras and whatnot, and some food trucks, and, you know, I think they'd be really, really hurt by the sales tax. I am in favor of finding something else. Unfortunately, you know, I bought my first house when I was 23, and it just, I mean, I get life goes on and things get more expensive, but it's never, I've adapted to the budgets and all that stuff and figured it out, but it just doesn't seem like it ever comes down. And I'm sure there's reasons for it, I'm not sure, but I think a, a different way to go about it would be nice. There's a lot of good people here for this stuff and against this stuff. I don't know the cause and effect, I just, ethically and morally, the sales tax and not voting on anything for the public just seems kinda off-putting. So, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff. Mark Jones, county resident, but I spend a lot of time in the city. I know I've spoken this with you all before, probably a few months back, about the total separation of police and fire and going down to the funding source. You know, when I started in the fire service in 1991, we had turnout gear in the back of the squad cars, and we had shotguns mounted in the fire truck because it was public safety. They cross-trained. We've separated from that now in, in 2022, I think it was, 23, or 21 maybe. Anyway, but the funding source never changed. So you've been still taking the public safety fund and dividing it between both police and fire. Again, I'll reiterate that I believe to correct this properly, both need their own foundation of funding. Now, then there's obviously the funding operation. So, sales tax. To me, my opinion, sales tax is a gateway drug. Once you get it in, you get used to what it does and you'll want more. So if there's a way to cap it and make sure that it doesn't ever change unless it goes to the vote of the people, that's gonna be the way to do it. Do it with a vote of the people. A different perspective of sales tax is it does divide it even, or not really evenly, but it does divide it over the largest group of people. And again, my opinion, I don't like sales tax, so another funding source would be ideal. But I don't envy your choices. You have a, you have a lot on your plate to try to figure this out, but we definitely need public safety funding because unless we're creating a safe and secure environment for everybody to prosper in, we're gonna lose businesses, we're gonna lose people, and we're not gonna have the tax base that we need because the population's going away. People are moving away, they're not safe here, they're not secure. So however you can do, whatever you can do to, to create that. In, in the 2016, I worked on a fire budget for the C. Scottsdale with the chief, did some analysis stuff for him. It was a $31 million budget, and a lot of cuts had to be made throughout the whole city in order for us to keep the staffing at a level that provided the best service for the city. So if you can cut from each and every department, like somebody mentioned before, 4% here, 5% there, whatever it may be, you may be able to come up with enough to at least maintain where you're at for now until we can find a different revenue stream. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, we do have Mark on the phone. Might take him just a minute to come off pause or off mute. Mark, are you out there?
You may want to remind him he needs to press star six on his phone.
Okay, Mark, you, you may need to press star six on your phone to unmute yourself.
Just did.
Thank you, we can hear you. Go ahead, Mark, you have three minutes.
Yes, hello. Mayor, I read your editorial piece today. It was well-written, but you failed to mention one thing, and that is, this sales tax should be a vote of the people. Whether you're for it or not, you should at least have that opportunity. By not giving people the opportunity to vote, you just shoot yourself in the foot. And all one needs to do is look back and see all of the taxing measures to fund law enforcement in the city, or, excuse me, the sales tax measures, and they all lose, they lose like by 80 to 20%. If you, a lot of people have come up tonight, and I respect both views, but if you really wanna hurt businesses, you know, I live in Josephine County, but I come into Grants Pass every day, and I spend my money. And again, to not let this be open to a vote of the people is unconscionable. Now, Councilor Yonker, our state representative, I'm curious if he is for this tax with no vote of the people. I'm all for law enforcement. One thing that a previous person said that I simply cannot let it go by, you know, we have a fentanyl problem, and it takes police time and effort in the parks, but the chairman of the Republican Party basically said, well, let them die. Let's not take police, you know, resources to help them. If this is the view of the Republicans, they should be voted out. Now, I have a proposal. Any taxing measure, whether it be county, city, anything, it must pass. If it passes 50% of the turnout, otherwise it should not be allowed. And I really hope that whoever our next state representative is gonna be, that they come forth with this bill. 50% of the people must vote for, so if a, a sales tax was to happen and 50% of the people voted, and a majority of that 50% voted for it, fine, you can have a sales tax. But if you have less than 50% of the people voting, no taxing measure, and you know, and I will fight for that in Salem. But first of, the main, and last thing I wanna say is, you cannot do a taxing measure without a vote of the people. You will all be recalled, or there will be a referendum, and you will not be popular. So think that one through. Anybody that wants to pass a resolution without a vote of the people should not be a public servant. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. That was Mark Seligman on the phone. Shortest conversation I ever had with him. All right.
Hi, David Dapper, city resident. We've heard a lot about how bad it is in the parks now, and if we don't take care of our police and our fire, it's not gonna get better. One, one other idea I had, I remember when that Welcome Center thing went down, and I believe out of the transient tanks, there was, I don't know the exact percent, but it was 200 grand could have been pulled out of that transient tax and moved into the general fund. That's just an idea to pull out, pull a few more bucks out of something, and then we can work on getting the tourism up to raise our transient funds. Just some, another thing that, you know, another door for you to open up.
All right, was there anyone else on this issue? Step on up. It's about time for us to move into discussion mode here.
My name is Sarah Hulse, I am a resident in the city of Grants Pass. I feel like there's been a lot of discussion about different avenues and how this will impact the community, business owners, restaurant owners. But I really feel like, unless I'm missing something, that there's been a lack of communication about how this is going to impact, impact individuals and families that are low income. I'm sure many of you are aware that the median home, the median income for Grants Pass is 30,000 a year. I don't think that anybody sitting up here right now is making 30,000 a year. So have the numbers been run about how that is going to impact these families and individuals? What about individuals who are retired on a fixed income? They get 0% increase every year when it comes to social security, but yet they're gonna get taxed with sales tax and foods tax and utilities. So I'm not sure if the numbers have been run here, it's been considered, but I feel like that there hasn't been a voice for the income individuals and families and people on fixed incomes and how it's gonna impact them and ability to live here. Is it gonna create more of a homelessness crisis? Are these people are gonna be forced out of moving, moving out of the town that they grew up in and love so dearly? Now, this is a small snippet of the Grants Pass population, and I agree with putting it to vote because many people could not come here tonight to voice their opinions for various reasons. And if we choose to not allow those people to have a voice, then who are we representing? Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name's Karen Jansen. I'm a resident of Grants Pass. I'm retired, and what she just said rang a bell because those of us who are retired, as well as those of us who are on low income for other reasons, fall in that bailiwick of low income. It's gonna hurt us.
Anybody else?
This is a retirement community.
All right, I'm gonna close public comment, and thank you all for speaking tonight. I have some comments here. We've heard lots of thoughtful comments, lots of differences of opinion, you know, and I think you've all understand some of the complexity of this issue, and we have a couple of different problems. One is determining how much money we need to come up with, and, and the numbers do seem like they're changing because there are multiple different problems that we have the potential to solve. So at the very minimum, $3.3 million shortfall that we're facing starting in July, and if we don't find a way to come up with $3.3 million, we'll either need to make cuts or we'll need to come up with new funding. So at the very least, we're looking at $3.3 million. And then, like J.C. had mentioned earlier, there is a sliding scale up to about 8.5 million dollars, depending on whether or not we are to add any staff at this time, which is something our departments have been asking for and, and which our audit studies over the past few years have shown, you know, it's recommended that we do, and we also have a general fund issue where we've been spending money for the past several years on public safety in order to keep from laying off staff, and it's money that would normally be going to facility improvements. We need a new roof on City Hall next door, the Hillcrest Fire Station needs some repairs, you know, new playground equipment, you know, sometimes fun things, remodeling or rebuilding caveman pool, you know, that, that we don't get to do when we're spending all our money on public safety. I do wanna let you all know, multiple people have asked, why not other departments? Why aren't we funding public safety first? And to some degree, we are. Most of the city's budget is restricted funds, it's money that we get for a specific purpose, we have to spend on a specific purpose. So your water bill is a perfect example. When you pay a water rate, that is the cost of providing the water to get to your house clean. Some monies we receive, including marijuana taxes, you know, are supposed to be allocated to a certain thing. You don't just get to spend it on whatever you want. So for the most part, our budget is, is locked up in restricted funds. When we talk about the general fund, the general fund is the part of our budget that we have the ability to allocate to whatever we want, right? Which I don't wanna make that sound too fun because, you know, public safety is, is getting the money. It would be things like a roof or new playground equipment or certain, whatever the council designates as a priority in any given year, which at this point, we actually can't designate priorities because we don't have any money left to put on those other things. It's all going to public safety. 100% of your city property taxes are going to fund public safety, and that includes the fire department, police department, and the dispatch. Tiny little bit of money goes to the women's crisis support team in the Sobering Center. So we are funding public safety. We do balance our budget every single year. It's a legal requirement. We don't spend more money than we have. However, we do have an issue in the state of Oregon, so this isn't a Grants Pass problem, but Measures 5 and 50 in the 1990s restricted the increase on property taxes to 3% per year. So this is a great thing for property owners, right? Because your taxes, your property taxes only go up 3% per year. It's not actually based on the value of your home. If any of you get on the Tax Assessor's website, you can see what level of property tax you're paying, and it's based on, since the 1990s, it's been growing at 3% per year, which is not reflective of today's actual real estate market value. Even when you sell your home, it doesn't reset the way the taxes are assessed. So what that means to the city, it's great for the taxpayer, no doubt. What it means for the city is that our money only increases 3% per year. And I think all of you who do your own home budgeting and pay your own bills know that costs go up a lot more than 3% per year. We have insurance, we have PERS, we have construction, we have salaries, which we do have some control over, except that when we're not being competitive in a market, we have, people can live right here in Grants Pass, we can have firefighters, police officers who live here in Grants Pass and drive 25 miles down the road to Central Point or Medford where they get paid much better, and they don't even have to move away from this community in order to do that. And so we can't just pay what we can afford, we have to pay what the, what the market interest is to, to some degree. And, and that's the job of the city council is to, to find this balance. So it's a really complicated issue. I do wanna address, we have some of the math issues, and I think, you know, you, you had a decent understanding of some of these, but the sales tax that the city council has been talking about is always on the smaller end of things, about 1.5%. We would, if we wanted to go down that road, have a lot of discussions about what gets taxed, whether or not there's a cap, what the cap would be. I find it interesting that some people said that they would drive to Medford out of spite, and yet you care about the community at the same time? You're not hurting me. You know, you would be hurting the businesses here that you didn't shop at, the restaurants that you didn't eat at. It's a long ways to go to Medford to save, you know, two bucks on sales tax for every hundred dollars you spend. Food and beverage tax, the council's talked about maybe as much as 5%. So again, if you go out for a nice hundred dollar meal, you're spending $5. If you go out to, you know, get a $25 burger, this is $1.25. Not worth, you know, driving to Medford or, or Rogue River or whatever. I will say, the reason why both of those options are on the table, because nobody wants to pay more taxes, with the utility fee, you don't get to choose how much you spend. It's just based on, you know, It's just based on, you know, your house gets whatever level the city council spends. So whether it's 12, whether it's 25, you don't get to choose, you know, whether you're going to go eat your burger at Red Robin or McDonald's because you don't have very much money tonight, or whether you're going to go out for a nice meal. You know, you would just have to pay the utility fee. So I think the council has been giving a lot of thought to how to do this because we don't want to do $3 million worth of layoffs, and we don't want to impose taxes, and we have to pay those, just like all of you. All your city council right here, they're volunteers, they don't get paid anything for their time being here tonight or any of the other things they do on your behalf. Half of us have jobs, the other half are retired, but we all pay taxes just like you do. So we have absolutely nothing to gain by this, except for securing the financial future of our city and our public safety. You know, I think I've also heard a fair amount of criticism, you know, about representation and taxation without representation. So I just want to remind people that the council has to make a choice whether they're going to impose something or whether they're going to put something up for a vote. They can do either one. It's perfectly legal. People have the right to repeal something if they don't like a council action, but you are represented. You've elected me, you've elected all of my colleagues sitting here tonight, and so you are definitely represented. And we are taxpayers and residents of Grants Pass. We've all been here a long time. Some of us were born here. So we are also committed, and this is just a very hard choice because I haven't heard anybody say they want less public safety in this town. You know, that wouldn't it be great if we had, you know, fewer police officers and fewer firefighters? What if we were like the county and we just had, you know, staff to come 16 hours of the day instead of 24? Nobody's asking for that, right? I mean, everybody wants public safety, and so we have to fund it. And that's the discussion they're all going to be having. It's something we've all been talking about for a couple of years now. It's a tough one, and just like you, we all have difference of opinion, you know, sometimes from one minute to the next, you know? It's a hard choice, and I think if we all knew what to do, we would have solved this problem a year ago. But there we go. I will let you all talk. Rob?
Thanks, Sarah. Very well put. The, I think it was a woman named Nancy Lester Early. She asked a question, and then I'm hoping that JC may be able to elaborate on. She asked about, you know, if she's got to make a budget for the next five or 10 years for her, you know, personal budget. Regardless of how we may solve this or address this problem tonight, what do future increases look like? Whether we did status quo, whether we added the eight public safety employees, what does that look like in years down the line?
Yeah, and I think we've talked about it multiple different ways, and it came up at the forum too as a kind of similar question. In doing nothing and keeping the staffing that we have, we're probably looking at a $2 million increase year in and year out, or the similar budget cut. And that kind of, if we go backwards in history, that is approximately what we have been cutting year in and year out to try and make the budget work as far as the last two budget cuts.
So every year, if we did status quo, the, essentially, our budget is going to be growing $2 million a year due to cost of living, increased PERS, increased workman's comp, things like that, with nothing to do with any additional spending on the city's part. It's just the fact of life.
Based on generic projections and estimations, I would say as of today, that would be the case.
Thank you.
Brian?
Sorry, just to be clear, expenses would rise $2 million a year roughly, but our revenues would also grow by about a million a year. So the gap really grows by about a million a year. Is that right?
So I think the net is probably closer to the $2 million a year as far as the net difference. Yes, revenues are going to grow over time, and as you see, is the property tax is at 3%, but our expenditures are increasing faster than that at this point.
Thanks.
Valerie?
I think everybody who was here and was complaining about the parks, whatever, have seen why our expenditures have increased. I think that's a given. I think we all understand that our police and fire are under a lot more pressure than they've ever been under. When you have, and we have lost numerous police and fire to Medford in the last three to five years, and it hasn't even been for the cuts, and it's for the stability. What we've really been looking for, for years, and I've been on since 2015, is stability. So they don't have to go out every three to five years to ask for more money and say, "We need more money. How can we make this work?" So it's really stability that we're looking for. So stability comes from not relying on just one source. And we've relied on public, on property taxes, but there's some facts that I think a lot of people don't realize and recognize about property taxes in Josephine County, and there was some misinformation put out there tonight that I think needs to be cleared up. Josephine County has the second lowest imposed property rate in the state of Oregon at $9.57. There are 19 different districts in Josephine County, and we're all kind of get a little bit, because some of them have a fire district, some of them don't. So there are 19 districts, 19 different districts. The average of those 19 districts in Josephine County is $9.57. If you go to the Oregon Department of Revenue and go to the Research Center, just statistics, Oregon Statistics, the average rate in Josephine County is $9.57. For Portland, Montloma County, it's $23.84 per thousand. In Clackamas County, which is Portland, is $17.03. In Washington, which is metro, it's 17. The average in the state is $17.26. That is just the amount taxed per thousand. Now, let's look at another fact in Josephine County. Only 8.7% of the land in Josephine County is privately owned and paying full taxes. 18% of taxable land is specially assessed at a lower rate. That includes farm and agricultural, or is nonprofit and thus tax exempt. I want to say that again. 18% of the taxable land is taxed at a lower rate. 73% of the land in Josephine County belongs to public agencies, most notably to federal, state, county, or city, and they are tax exempt. So that tells you that 9% of the people in Josephine County pay full taxes on their property. Compare that to anywhere else in the state, and then you look at the value of the land in Portland, or the value of the land in Medford, and take that value times that tax, and you can see why other cities have things that we don't have. And yes, we are a poor community. We also are one of the very lowest in terms of median income. We are, and we also are a retired community. But I will tell you that I'm on social security, and I got a raise this year, and I got a raise last year. I think my raise last year was 6% social security because of the economy. So to say that we don't get a raise is not true. As social security people, we get a raise because the cost of living goes up, and the government gets that too. I will also tell you that subsidized housing, which there are at least 500 units in this Josephine County of subsidized housing, they are not going to pay a rate increase on water because if it's federally funded and they're getting subsidized, that is subsidized as well. So the owners send that into the government, and the government pays it as part of their subsidy. So it's not, I know it's going to affect a lot of people, and that's why, honestly, you know, we have for years dealt with this. I can go back to 2015. We tried, we put that $3.69 on, I wasn't on at the time, for the jail, because you're right. If you don't have a jail and you don't have a public defense system, you have nothing because they're just going in and coming out. So without that, we're hurting. I know they're doing it now because we need more money, and that money's got to come from the state. But without money, it's not going to get fixed. That's the problem. Everything costs more money. So, I lost my train of thought, but anyway, so you're talking about the fact that, you know, anyway, I lost it, but the point is, is that everything's going up. Everything's going up. So you can't sit there and say, "You want public safety," and they're doing a great job. You know what the pressure they're under. We have for years, we, I can think of, anyway, I know it was a jail tax. Well, guess what, folks? Trust us. We put that jail tax on, and we took it off. We went out to get a gas tax because we wanted to take the transportation fee off your water bill, but it was voted down. It would have been a lot more sense to have outside people coming into Grants Pass, filling up their gas tanks, and paying for our streets, but right now, that comes on our water bill.
Point of order.
Yeah, I'm sorry, this isn't a point for discussion. It's just council discussion.
Anyway, so the reality is, we also have gone out to try to get, we did go out to try to get a fire district because that makes sense. With a fire district, we could have grown the fire district and reduced the costs because when you have more people involved in it, the costs go down, more people paying. That was voted down. We went for a 10-cent increase on our property taxes. That was voted down. We went out for, so we've been voted down over and over and over again, but there's nobody that says, "Oh, whoops, the price of gas went up." Our police officers don't say, "Oh, sorry, can't afford to come out to your call tonight." We're up there 24/7. We're there when they need us. When you need them, they get there. We kept our times down, and they've been coming and crying to us and saying, "You know something? I'm getting tired of getting called back from vacation when I'm taking my family time on a family on vacation, and I have to come back to work because I don't have a choice." That's the job they have. They don't have a choice. If there's not enough officers, they're called back, whether they're on, they get overtime. So right now, we're paying a lot of overtime, and we're paying for that. So that is costing us a lot of money. So it just, we have to solve the problem. The most logical way from anybody is 1.5% sales tax capped. Can't be changed except by voter for people. $100, you're going to pay a buck fifty. So tell me that you're going to drive to Medford to save yourself a buck fifty. Go for it. If you are, that's what you're going to do, then you should go over there and spend more money and make the gas people richer. It doesn't make any sense. I go, have come to understand that that's a no-no word in Oregon, and you're right because we're ruggedly independent. But you know something? I travel to every other state, and I've never once gone in there and complained about their, the sales tax that I'm paying, and it's not 1.5. It's like 10%. It's like 12%. But I don't not travel or don't go there because I might have to pay sales tax. But I also expect that if I get in a car accident or something happens, I expect service, and that costs money, and I know that. So I'm just saying, this is a difficult decision, and we have tried multiple ways. And I understand, you know, people don't want to trust the government. We're in your pockets, but you know something? There's also a lot of services that are provided that people take for granted. And for those people coming into the county, well, our streets are on our water bill. You don't contribute to our streets, potholes. So in some ways, it only makes sense to spread it out thinner. And what I'm hearing is, no, don't do a tax of any kind, okay? Well, put it on your water bill, and then you're right. It hurts the people that are retired because it doesn't matter. They can't do anything about it. They just have to pay it. And we will put funds to try to help people because we do that sort of thing, but it's a real problem, and this is what I've said all along. You say the word "tax," and you're going to fill, you know how many meetings we've had about this? What was, somebody said 20 minutes, 20 meetings? And how many matrices we've looked at, and how many conversations we've had, and how many times we've gone to the firefighters and to the police, and we've heard all this? Yeah, where were you then? Now it's like, well, we want a different solution. Hey, we've been working on this a long time, and the, whatever the, we hit the road, we're on a stop now. We have to do something. It's not a matter of, oh, let's put it off. So we will make a decision tonight to do something, if I have any control.
Point of order. This isn't a conversation with the audience.
No, so I'm just saying, we have to do something, and I know whatever we do will not be popular, but we will come up with something. Because the last two years, or four years, we've cut $2 million, we've cut $2 million. I could sit there and talk about all of the cuts that we've made. I mean, we're talking right now, we have no police captain. We have, I mean, we've made cuts, we don't have any money. We're putting no money away for those future fire trucks we need, or those future police truck cars we need. That's down the road. But we've made those cuts to try to come up with a solution, and it's not working. So we're going to have to do something. So I just wanted to point out that some of the misinformation that was out there was misinformation, and that you can go right to the Oregon Department of Revenue and see where we are compared to the rest of the state. And we do pay a lot less. Another little interesting fact that I always find interesting is that we do have a low median income, and we do have, but we also have one of the highest levels of bank deposits in the state of Oregon, and that's the one that really confuses me.
Joel?
So if you're wondering, when Valerie calls me, she sounds exactly the same way. Yeah, yeah. It's just her method of communication. She earns her money, though she doesn't get paid, and I appreciate her. Two things I just wanted to address, and then we need to get on with it and make a decision. There was someone that said, "Who makes the budget, and why don't you plan for these things?" And we do that on an annual basis, and we look ahead at least two years, if not more. With this one, we've been looking ahead even more. We're going to appoint budget committee members after this topic, and you folks go home. We'll stay here and appoint the budget members, and appreciate you to stay attuned to that. And it's also on the city website, so there's no hidden agenda, and everything's done openly and as it should be in a democracy, a republic democracy. So I wanted to answer that. The other thing is, what I heard very clearly tonight is, we need to make a decision. I didn't hear everybody supporting the same thing, which if I had, I would have thought that would be kind of suspect, you know, if that happened that way, because all of them have some advantages and disadvantages. And so we're going to have to go ahead, and we need to make a decision. I heard that from several of you, and I think we all felt that up here, and we'll do that. So need to proceed.
Rob?
There's a lot, a lot to process coming from the public tonight. One of the things that I'd like to mention and try to make clear to small business owners that may be in the audience or maybe on TV or restaurant owners is just some idea of my background. When I started my first business in 1981, which was a restaurant, my take-home was $150 a week, and that was for about 70 hours a week. And I admit, my business was undercapitalized, and that was my mistake. It was undercapitalized. As a result, it was sweat equity. Myself and my partner worked about 70 hours a week for $150 take-home. My rent at home was $425 a month, and I was married with two kids. Now, you do the math on that, and you understand that for 24 hours a day, every cell in my body was stressed like nobody who's ever had a government job would ever understand. And you people that are in business for yourself, or in the restaurant business especially, you know exactly what I mean. And you know that the people who've signed the backs of government checks for their whole life don't have any idea what that's like. And in addition, I was signing the fronts of checks for my employees as well, and there aren't many government employees who've ever signed the fronts of checks. So when a person comments in the audience that you don't trust anyone who's up here, you know, my DNA is 99% more similar to the people in the audience tonight who own their own businesses than it is to anybody who's ever made a career in City Hall. And I just hopefully can make that clear, like, I get it, you know? And I'm still there. And, you know, it's, with regards to, you know, different biases you think that I or council may have, I don't know. I may be the only one in the room, but if we were to enact, or people were to vote on a sales tax, my business would have to collect it. If we did a restaurant tax, my business would have to do that too, because I have a small restaurant within my small natural food store. Utility fee, guess what? I'm paying that at my business, I'm paying that at my home, and fortunately, I'm a small-time landlord, and I would be, end up having to pay that as well on the few income properties that I have. So I don't have a clear leader or horse in this race. I'm pretty unbiased. I can look at this from a lot of different angles, and I've busted my butt in my own businesses. And again, anybody who owns their own business out in the audience knows exactly what I'm talking about. And I'll tell out in the audience knows exactly what I'm talking about. And I'll tell you, if you own your own business, owning a restaurant's a lot different, and it's a lot harder than, you know, if there's a power outage at a shoe store, it makes no difference, you know? Your size 10 loafers don't go bad. But, you know, if you own a restaurant, and you've got $10,000 in freezers, that's a whole different deal. That's a whole nother level of stress. I get it. And you may not wanna, some people may still say they don't trust me, because I'm on this side of the, of the partition. But, you know, I will also tell you that in 2008, I believe, and I'm probably the only one in the room here who was part of a successful referendum campaign, signature gathering referendum campaign, challenging an action that the council took. There was no talk of recall. We just took the next feasible step, and essentially, council wanted to use something out of the vote of the people upfront. We were gonna get a vote on the back end anyway. So there's nothing that we could do here tonight that would exclude a potential vote of the people, whether it's up front or in back. And I did it in '08, okay? And I, I personally got half the signatures needed to get that to the ballot. And the way that ended up is, actually, the people never voted on it, because once the council realized that we got the signatures, they actually decided to pull the, you know, pull the, the issue, which was a little disappointing. We wanted, after doing all that work, to get it on the ballot. But in any event, it got overturned because of the people's will. So, so there's nobody out in the audience tonight, or on, at home, or up here, that is any kind of powerless victim in this situation. If we were to enact something tonight, you actually can still take it to a vote of the people, if that's what you feel you want to do. But I just had to address, and there's one other thing too, with regards to, and, and again, you can trust me or not trust me, but anybody who's got a small business, I probably, I understand, my DNA is with you. I do want to make the point that, we've had a couple times, it was said at the forum, and it was also said tonight, that, um, uh, sales tax and restaurant tax have been voted down numerous times. It is true that sales tax has been voted down twice in the last 10 years or so. Okay, the, just to be more clear for my fellow counselors and people in the audience, the, um, restaurant tax, I believe it was '06, that tax actually, when that went to a vote of the people, that was dedicated, less than one-third of that money was dedicated to public safety. That was not earmarked for public safety, it was not a public safety food and beverage tax. Less than one-third. It was about, a little less than half was school district, and the rest was parks. And quite frankly, I remember it very clearly. I don't really believe the money was needed then, it was a money grab. And that's part of why it got voted down. There was nowhere near this level of effort or scrutiny to study the budget line by line, cut fat, have public discussion, have public forums. There was nowhere near any of that. That was a money grab. It did go down, but it was not a, it was not even half dedicated to public safety. And, um, again, so I wouldn't, and it wasn't, it wasn't earmarked for public safety. So to call, to say that a food and beverage tax has gone down before, kind of accurate. 32% of that tax was public, was food and, was for public safety, but, um, we've never actually done that before. And the people have never been asked to support public safety 100% with a food and beverage tax. People have never been asked that before. And we understand, and as Sarah was saying earlier, we've never heard from anybody in the audience tonight that you want less public safety, okay? That's, that isn't even, we're taking that off the table, at least for now. So anyway, that's, that's what I need to say right now. Thank you.
Dwayne is on the phone.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to thank, Valerie did pretty good explaining things. I agree with mo, most of what she said, Rob, and stuff. I just want to make more of a comment. I think it's a misconception of what people think that the city is in charge of sometimes, versus what the state is being forced on the city to do. And people need to understand there's policies that are, that are voted on in Salem that affect the city. And the city has no choice but what, but to do what the state has mandated them to do. That leaves the city to figure out how to run the city safely and manage their budget. It's not something that the city brought on themselves, it is the people in Salem that voted for these policies that are being enforced on them. And I just want to encourage people to do a little research, because they can get involved with the state and testify about what the state is doing to their city. That is the way you're gonna stop some of this spending that's being forced on us of, um, things. You need to get involved in not, you know, I'm not saying the city council's perfect, or the city's perfect, but a lot of these things are out of the city's control, and they are state mandated things. That's all I had to say.
Thank you. Rick.
I'm looking for a council-making decision tonight, and I'm very supportive of a direction that retains the current fire and police staffing, adds on additional members. But also, whatever course of direction we make, we need to have the message out there that we can attract new people to come here when we need them. And as people retire or move on, we need to find new people. And I just hope, whatever direction we go tonight, we'll portray that message. Thank you.
Brian.
Thank you. Um, thank you for coming tonight, everybody. I think we all heard that there's no clear direction that we should take. Everyone has a little bit different opinion, even up here. We've been working towards a solution on this problem for three years. And we're to the point now to where if we don't take an action, I don't know what action we're gonna take, but if we don't take an action, um, we're gonna have to start laying people off. We're gonna have to start laying off public safety staff. That's, that's the point we're at. So, we have not heard from the public that that's what they want to happen. We've heard a lot of, um, don't do this and don't do that. The one thing that we've heard that they do want us to do is to not cut public safety. So in order to do that, we're gonna have to figure out an option tonight to do that, because budget's coming up here in a couple months, and we're, we're, our backs are essentially against the wall. I don't think, I don't think any of us take joy in having to implement one of these options. None of us want to have to do this. It's just the reality of the budget, it's the reality of costs to run public safety departments, it's the reality of inflation, it's just the reality that we're faced with. We don't want to saddle the public with additional burden. And we know each of these options presents a little bit different burden to a little bit different group of people. So, it's hard. And no matter what we do, there's gonna be a group of people that is extremely upset by whatever choice we make. So please go easy on us in that regard. I will say we have, and I think that almost everyone in here would agree, we have an excellent police and fire department. I was born here, I grew up here, and I've always held our police and fire services in very high regard. And I think that they do an excellent job with the resources that they have. I can attest to that personally. On Saturday, I was away from the house, and I was with my daughter, and she was riding her electric scooter, and she took a really bad spill and broke her arm. Bone sticking out, the whole deal. Um, the fire department was there in five minutes or less. So, you know, that was just like a testament to what I already knew about our police and fire. But, um, we want to keep, uh, those levels of service high for our community, because we all know that our community is facing challenges with crime, homeless, all kinds of other issues. So, there's no right answer. Depending on how you look at it, this one looks like the right answer, or that one looks like the right answer. Personally, um, I'm trying to look out for the people in our community that have the least ability to pay. I feel like I have a responsibility to look out for those people, whether it's, you know, an elderly person on fixed income, or whoever it is. That's the lens that I'm looking at this through to some degree. And so personally, if we're talking about options, um, any option that minimizes the utility fee is the one that I would prefer, because the utility fee, as says fee, it's effectively the same as a tax. You're, you're being forced to pay it. So it doesn't matter if it's called a fee, or if it's called a tax. All those options, people are being forced to pay. The utility fee is actually even more onerous, because you have zero control over the amount you pay. You're, you're basically told, this is the amount you're gonna pay, whether you like it or not, or you don't get water. At least with the other two options, people have some control over the amount they pay. If they have a limited income, they can choose to not go out to eat, or they could choose not to buy that new TV, or whatever the situation is. So those two options at least give people some level of control over what they pay, which I feel is important. I know that the word tax attached to those immediately kind of makes a lot of people see red, and I understand that. But just looking at it from what it means to people in the community in the real world, those options that have the word tax attached to them, spread the burden the farthest. They bring in money from county residents, they bring in money from tourists. They even make homeless people pay part of the, part of the issue. So, um, I would be in favor of any option that minimizes the utility fee. I am not in favor of putting this on the utility fee. I think that solution is a dead end. With the cost increases that we're gonna see, I anticipate we're gonna have to raise the utility fee $4 or $5 per year to meet the gap, the growing gap. And you can't do that for more than a year or two before, you know, pitchforks are coming to council. So, I'm not, yeah, that, that isn't a, a real option in my opinion. So, whether it's a sales tax at 1%, which, you know, a 1% sales tax is not gonna crumble the city. It's not gonna, you know, it, it spreads the burden the farthest, so I would be in favor of that. I would be amenable to some combination of food and beverage and utility fee, I suppose. But, um, all that to say, is a really tough decision, and, um, thanks for hanging in there.
All right, well, we do need to start moving in the direction of a decision tonight. What are y'all thinking? DJ.
I won't be getting behind a sales tax or a food and beverage tax. It's my true belief that the earners need to approve a transactional tax of any kind. Not denying that we need to find a new revenue source, because if we do not, we will lose police officers. And I think we can all unanimously agree that that is just not an option. I'm willing to shoulder the utility fee for now, and maintain, or at least marginal growth in the public safety. And that's where I'm at.
Rob.
Um, I'm definitely for, uh, the, uh, the growth of public safety, meaning the eight positions, with one, uh, clear caveat. And I, I told Aaron last week, I was gonna ask him about this tonight. One of the biggest, um, I don't know if complaints is the right word, but one of the biggest concerns that we've heard from the fire department over the last couple of years, from the employees, is the forced callbacks, or forced, forced overtime, or people having to cancel their vacation plans, or whatever, because they're somewhat understaffed. And, um, you know, it's, I think we hear that complaint probably more often than we hear, uh, they don't make as much money as Medford, or whatever. By adding the three fire positions at the Parkway station, uh, it's my belief that, um, those three, if those three positions are somewhat flexible, meaning if someone were ill or out at Parkway, they could still run two to a truck like they do now. Or if someone were ill or on vacation at one of the other stations, they can't go out one to a truck, but the third person who's at Parkway could then go to one of the other two stations. It's my belief that the three person, uh, at Parkway, if it was done flexibly, should address, to a major degree, if not all, the forced callback situation. Now, when I asked that question, I think in December of, uh, I guess interim chief DeLonge, he seemed to think, or he, I believe, agreed with that statement. We do know, however, that he is retiring very soon. So I want to hear from Aaron if that is his view of how the third person at the Parkway station would be used, and it would likely address our forced callback situation, so that the, uh, firemen could, uh, schedule their time off more predictably. That's a question for Aaron. Do you, do you agree that that would be a, a way to use that third person at Parkway?
Thanks for the question, Councilor Pell. I, I do believe the additional FTEs that are being asked for, one of the primary purposes for that is to address those concerns that you, you stated, to, to deal with the forced callbacks, and to provide some hospice for the work that we're doing right now and all the overtime and, and the forced callbacks that are occurring. So both in police and fire, we would see an improvement in that.
Joel.
So I'm not sure where to begin, so I'll just muddle through it. Um, one of the things, the first, the eight positions, we're actually restoring them, they're not new positions, they're positions that had been cut. Our workman's comp rate has gone up significantly, like doubled. It's because, uh, people are not getting their time off. Um, it's affecting their mental health and their safety. For those that have worked in public safety, understand that. Um, for those that own a small business, understand that, if you don't have adequate help. Um, and, yeah, to hire, um, those eight people, it's gonna reduce your overtime, it's gonna reduce your callback, it's gonna reduce your workman's comp. So hopefully it'll offset some of those costs. One of the things about the sales tax and the beverage tax, the macroeconomics of the community, and it's a little more obtuse, um, we have an industrial base, uh, a business base, would you say, that is rather small compared to other cities our size, compared to Medford, uh, compared to, um, all the cities up north for sure, where my kids live. This will not help their competitiveness. And it's been a couple tough years for them. I don't think from the macroeconomic standpoint, even though it's a little obtuse, a little more harder to understand, that that's a good move. The, um, fee on the water bill, um, if it's kept small, we, we do have, for those that can't afford to pay, there's, uh, some relief that we have through, uh, some funds that are distributed to one of our nonprofits. Talking to several of the, uh, business owners that form this tax base, that is, uh, not very big. The increase in, in the water bills is preferable to them, because it allows them to keep their competitiveness. One of the things that struck me was, uh, people make up their mind whether they're gonna go to the restaurant or not. And, and Brian, you know, you may be right, you got some discretion there. You got some discretion with that, even if you don't have a tax. You don't have to go out to eat. Uh, and you can save money, and, and probably a lot of people, more people are doing that this year. So, so that discretion exists regardless. Um, the other thing is, though, for those people that do decide to go out to eat, if, uh, all of a sudden they're going, um, the, the business here is less competitive, and they go to Murphy to go out to eat, or they go to, uh, which is good for Murphy. Or, or they go to some restaurant that's right on the outskirts of Grants Pass. That competitive, competitiveness, uh, is hard to quantify. You know, at, at 2%, it's probably not great, it's probably not a great expense to pay it. So either way, um, but, but it is a, a tax base that, uh, I think we need to nurture. When I look at the other taxes that have been put on businesses at the state level, like Dwayne referred to, there's the, um, it's, and it's put on your like Dwayne referred to, there's the, and it's put on your gross, it's not put on your net. 1% tax. And so if you make 10% profit, and you get a 1% tax on your gross, that's a 10% tax on your profit. And I know, even in running our medical office, you start to pay attention to those things as you make out your monthly taxes, pay your social security taxes, your state taxes, your federal withholding taxes. And you want to remain competitive. The other thing is, they got now a transit tax on employee wages. The state of Oregon, again, did that. And so every one of these things kind of adds to the burden of that part of our community that supports what we do in terms of our industrial base. So I'm pretty sensitive to that, especially since we lost a lot of our industrial base that used to work for the federal government. And the federal government made some decisions that reduced that base here as well, drastically. And so I'm pretty sensitive to that. So I'm going to be looking at a minimum tax on the water bill, and I would call it a tax, not a fee, and see where we're at. The other thing is, as you're looking to the future and your personal budget, you don't know what next year looks like, price-wise. You know things are going to go up, how much are they going to go up? All of a sudden, if you're a business, all of a sudden, the minimum wage goes up. Or if you're at home, your grocery bill went up, I don't know how much this year. So how, you know, you know, yeah. So, and I should know, but my wife's back there, she takes care of those things for me. But anyway, what is it going to be next year? And so you can make one estimate, one assumption, and that would require a certain tax. Or you can make another assumption, based on another scenario of how much your food's going to cost next year, and your budget would be different. So this is not just a one-year shot regardless, we're going to have to look at it. You know, it would be just as bad for us to collect too much money, though I'm sure the city employees probably wouldn't mind it, as it would be to collect too little. And because we don't want to siphon off what is important for our citizens. So we're going to need to look at that every year, just like you do with your own budget. So that's where I'm at.
Rob.
Thanks, Joel. So I'm going to just speak a little bit, and I'm going to basically make a proposal. I'm not going to make a motion, but I'm just going to mention where I think I'm at. I just want to mention, you know, that I went around two weeks ago, probably six or seven hours, talked to different business owners downtown, and it was somewhat predictable. The general business owners did not, in any way, shape, or form, favor a sales tax. And their primary reason for it was not so much the reporting or anything like that. Primary reason was, is that they say that all the time, it's an everyday occurrence, that tourists mention they love being without a sales tax. It's part of the reason, it's part of the draw, I get it. The few restaurant owners I talked to were irate, don't want a restaurant tax, so they don't want either tax. But it was pretty predictable. In my opinion, and again, I own something that would be, I run a business that would be taxed as a restaurant, it is a small restaurant, within my store. You know, it's obvious to me that a food and beverage tax, like a sales tax, but a food and beverage tax is not a tax on my income, it's not a tax on my net, it's a pass-through. I'm not paying it, I'm having to collect it, I'm having to record it, I'm having to send it in. And I would be, as any business owner would be, reimbursed somewhat for the operational costs involved for that. The amount that is the business owners allowed to keep and being reimbursed has yet to be determined. But it is a pass-through. I personally don't believe, and I don't know anybody who's actually, when I talk to the business owners, when I talk downtown, to all the downtown business owners I spoke with, not a single person says that when they're on vacation, or they go to Ashland, they don't eat out because there could be a restaurant tax. They say it makes no difference to them. It makes no difference on how much they tip. I know we've heard from, you know, I've seen the talking points from the Oregon Restaurant Association, and one of the things they say as well, it would come, food and beverage tax would come right out of the waitstaff's earnings. And I don't believe that for a second. I never tip less because there's a restaurant tax in Ashland, and there's a restaurant tax anyplace where I'm on vacation. So I really try to keep the conversation real. I don't like to get sidetracked with hypotheticals that just don't play out in the real world. I don't believe there's anyone in this room who tips less if they happen to eat out in Ashland or they eat out on vacation because there's a tax involved. So, you know, I also, like I mentioned once before, if my wife and I go out on the cheap, and we spend $40 for a meal for two, which is pretty cheap nowadays, an extra couple of bucks, or a buck or two, is not going to prevent us from doing it. If there are people that are at an income level that can't do that, I totally respect it. But they have control over how much they pay, they don't have to go out to eat. So I believe that a food and beverage tax is a pass-through. I believe that the businesses can be reimbursed for the time they take to process it. And where I'm thinking right now, I believe, and I wish, J.C., I'm just going to ask you a question. If we looked at a 3% food and beverage tax in combination with roughly an $8 utility fee, would that bring us roughly the $4.8 million that we need to add the eight employees? So J.C., that's a question for you, right?
He's looking.
I don't have that in front of me right now, so.
You can borrow my sheet if you want.
We have the matrix here.
Well, I was pulling it up electronically.
Ballpark.
Hang on, well, he's looking for that, actually. Rick, can we get a motion to extend the meeting past nine?
I'd like to make a motion to extend the city council meeting past nine o'clock.
Thank you, a second if I, Vanessa, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
So to answer your question, anecdotally, yes. Those two revenues, when you look at the matrix, those would align to approximately that $4.8 million. The one thing I do worry about with initiating a food and beverage or any other kinds of sales tax is the potential wording or verbiage that you potentially have not yet discussed on this dais, and the time it may take to implement that, which would then reduce potentially those revenues.
For the first year.
For the first year, correct.
Delay at least for a year.
I think we, I asked you that question a couple months ago about what kind of carryover, or what, I should say, what kind of bridge loan, or whatever. And you gave an answer at that time, like what would happen? Because I realized if it was collected quarterly, it could be a minimum of three or four months, or if it was collected yearly, it could be a minute, you know. But I asked you that question about what would we do in the meantime, and I believe you had a response. Do you remember what it was?
Off the top of my head, I don't remember the response, but I can give you a generic response. If it were to try to be instilled by July 1, I think we'd be in a sprint, potentially, because we don't have the staffing, we don't have an RFP out there for an administration of that food and beverage tax, which we would probably look into. The delay potentially of collection would be quarterly. So if you did get it perfectly done on July 1, the first quarter wouldn't come in until October. And then you would also only get three payments in that first year because the last quarter would come in the July, which would be in that following year. So it's all about the timing, and I guess how detailed we're trying to get into what that food and beverage may look like as far as municipal code.
Thank you.
Valerie. Well, after looking at 18 million matrices and having so many discussions, the reality of it, and the one that comes out that we talked most recently, is a $17.25 utility fee. And that utility fee brings in the $4.8 million that is needed. And I would challenge our community and say, okay, we know we want public safety, that is the number that's going to do it. If we want to decrease that, then we need to come together as a community and decide what sort of tax we are going to move forward with, and help us to put that on the ballot. Help us to come up with that source, because that's what I hear. I hear, well, I don't want to divide the community, I don't want to do that, you know, give us some more time. We don't have more time. And that $17.25 buys us just a couple of years, and gets us the staff we need, and gets us moving forward. So I say, we go for what we need, and we have that amount. And if the community truly wants to make it more equitable and more fair, then I expect them to come to us, just like the county tax district people grassroots said, hey, we got to do something. Yes, because we've been saying for years, we got to do something. And now people are standing up and screaming for it. Because you realize, we really do have to do something. So that would be my proposal, is to go for the $17.25 right now. And if indeed people want to vote on the tax, then bring it, and we'll get it written, and within the next year. Because whatever, even now, if we were to, tonight on the dais, vote on a tax, it will not be able to be implemented in a year anyway, because it takes a certain amount of time. So I say, we go, we make our police whole, we say it's $17.25, and then we work as a community to make it more equitable. And if it doesn't, and nothing comes together, then it will stay at that $17.25, and eventually have to rise, if that's what we have to do. There are a lot of things right now, five years ago, I don't think any of us expected what's going on in our parks to be going on. None of us in Grants Pass, Oregon, expected a lawsuit to become a class action suit that got us where we are. But that's where we are, and it's a federal, and federal trumps local. Unfortunately, local people have to live with it. But federal and state, in the Constitution, trump local. So that's where we are, where we're at. We are going to go to the Supreme Court, we're hoping for some sort of thing to come as a result, and hopefully, there will be some sort of change. But it doesn't matter, we're still going to need the police force. So that would be my proposal, is to just go for the $17.25, and challenge you to come with a better reason, and bring it to the table, and we'll listen.
Brian, then Dwayne, then DJ.
So putting it all in the utility fee, just so everyone understands what that means, for every residential utility bill, $17.25 a month, it's about $207 per year. For every commercial account, small business, it's $57.44 a month, which is $689 a year. And those are amounts that the city will essentially be forcing homeowners and small businesses to pay. The other options are a pass-through. The taxes are passed through to the people engaging in the commerce, not to the businesses, not to the homeowners. You would have to spend, if we did a 5% food and beverage tax, you'd have to spend over $4,100 a year out at restaurants to equal the amount that you would be paying in a utility fee. For a 1% sales tax to equal the amount of the utility fee, you'd have to spend $20,700 a year on retail taxable goods to be paying more than you would be paying on the utility fee. I'm pretty comfortable saying that most people in this town spend under those numbers per year on those particular types of things. So whether people understand it or not, one of those options will make them pay less money year over year than the utility fee. The utility fee has the smallest base of people. It's putting the burden on the smallest group. And that small group, a lot of those people don't have a lot of money. And those are our constituents, those are the people that voted us in. I'm extremely uncomfortable with having the utility bill shoulder this entire burden, and then putting the onus on the public to come up with another option. I like the sentiment of that, but in practice, that is an extremely difficult thing for the public to do. If we can't do it as a city, and as a city council with, you know, our knowledge and our positions, it's extremely difficult, like nearly impossible, for that to come up from the public who doesn't have the time or the motivation to do this kind of work. So I am not in favor of just putting it on the utility fee and hoping that it's going to change later, because I know that it probably isn't. And I know that our utility fee is already insane. We already have so many fees on our utility bill. You already pay 80, 85 bucks on your bill before you even take a water, drop a water out of the tap. And I know in the summer, it's well over $100. So we're going to put another $17 on there, and then we don't even know if we have enough money for the water treatment plant yet. So we don't even know if we're going to have to put on another fee for that. So I cannot vote in favor of just putting this whole thing on the utility fee. I could vote in favor of a 1% sales tax, which would cover the entire burden. I could potentially be in favor of a food and beverage tax combined with a minimal utility fee, although that option in subsequent years starts to have issues with growth. So just to get the ball rolling, I'm going to move that we start working on a 1% sales tax. And until the 1% sales tax is implemented, we institute a $15 utility fee as a stopgap measure. And then once the utility fee, or once the sales tax comes online, that $15 utility fee would be removed from the utility bill.
Is there a second? Second if I, Rob. All right, discussion on that motion, and did have Dwayne, and then DJ. I think Dwayne's on the phone.
Thank you, Mayor. That kind of changed the topic on me, so. I would just say that whatever the council does here, that it needs to have a sunset until the people voted in. So I would just stick to that, because my comments were going to be off-topic now. So I am not in favor of what this proposal is right this minute.
Okay, thank you. DJ?
Sure, I'm not in favor of this proposal either, at this point. There's too many unknowns involved in a general sales tax. We haven't even begun to have the conversation of exclusions, and what that's realistically going to look like. I could absolutely get behind the effort to spend the time and vet and structure a taxation of some kind to propose to the ballot. But I have a fundamental issue with the transactional tax without the earners' approval. And so I'm going to have to maintain that position for now, so I'll be voting no.
Vanessa?
I think that this also does give us time to go through those exemptions, and what would and would not be included in a sales tax. I think we, council recently had a pretty revolutionary idea, enough so that we moved to support a 1.5% sales tax within the last month, after seeing the funding matrix of what is possible for that. I think Councilor DeLaGrange outlined it wonderfully, that although it is on paper the most reprehensible option, it truly is the most equitable in terms of, when you institute a cap, in terms of how much additional income people have each month. It really is the most equitable with the utility fee. The community would be paying significantly more. It would be much easier for us to institute, it feels easier on the public end to hear those words. But I'm afraid that the sales tax or the food and beverage tax does have more of a reach, more people would be paying into it, and it would be less burdensome for those low-income earners. So I will be supporting this motion.
Rob.
Yeah, there's little denying that the arithmetic or the math of this concept makes a lot of sense. And I have to look at the social implications of that, beyond that. And the social implication I'm talking about is that overwhelmingly, people in Grants Pass don't want this. And they've, it's pretty clear that they don't want the words, they don't like the word "sales tax." And the practical, for me, the biggest practical reason there is that we're the only ones in the state that would have it. I can't believe that some very liberal, tax-happy city up north has an I can't believe that some very liberal, tax-happy city up north has already done it and been the first, or the second, or the third up there. I don't know why, you know, we would even potentially consider it down here, because it's not popular. And, you know, to get that reputation is a real, a real unknown. And that isn't in, in anyone's calculations. You know, I, many have heard, you heard me say it before, but it's worth repeating. There are many downtown merchants who say it is a regular occurrence. People from California say they, one of the reasons they come here is because there's no sales tax. Now, the fact that it's one, you know, very low is one thing, but the fact that we don't have it at all makes it a really easy decision for a lot of people to stop and come up here or even make this a destination. So, again, the, the math alone is fine, the human factor on that one, I just can't support the sales tax.
Let's do Rob, Rick, and then Val.
I know, we have to make a decision and we have to choose something, and as already been stated, it may not be popular with the public. I'm, I'm leaning toward food and beverage. I also agree with Rob and the comments he's made. I feel sales tax is maybe not the time to be pursuing that. The other comment I do agree with, Vanessa indicated that a sales tax actually would provide a substantial base to guarantee the funding that we need for public safety. And while it is ideal, I don't feel the community is ready for that. So, again, I would not be supporting this motion, but I'm open to other ideas. Thank you.
Valerie?
Yeah, I have also stated that I think the one point five, or, and I think it would need to be one point five, is the most equitable. But it has been very clear to me that that is something that this community is not ready for. They've made their points, it's been voted down twice. I will also say, I talked with someone in the audience, actually, about the fact that we did run the survey. And the survey that we ran actually said that their first preference was a utility fee and a food and beverage tax. So I realized at that time that, yeah, you know, I guess we really maybe should have listened to that. That was more palatable to people on the survey, the people that took the time to do the survey. So I may be open to that. I still feel that for, because I do not want to target one particular industry, I do think that a sales tax makes most sense. But I once again realize that unless it comes and it's voted on, that it's going to be repealed. And so then basically, we're wasting our time. So I'm just going to stand behind my support for public safety in saying that we need to raise the amount that we need, which would be seventeen twenty-five and no sales tax. And if somebody wants to lower it and propose the food and beverage, I may, may go in that direction. But the current one, I would not go for.
Joel?
Well, we probably just need to get on and vote. I don't know if you need my, my opinion or not, but, so every decision is a three-legged stool. It has to be economically viable, which all three of these are. It has to be technically possible, which all three of these are. And it has to be socially acceptable, which probably about one and a half of these aren't. So, so if you don't, if you have a two-legged stool, it doesn't stand up. So I'll be voting no.
Brian?
Yeah, I was just going to respond to a couple things that councilors said. You know, Rob's, and, and we've all heard this. There's overwhelming, people don't want the sales tax. People hear a sales tax and they recoil. And I get that. I was born here, I grew up here. My whole life, I've been against a sales tax. We pride ourselves in Oregon on not having a sales tax. When there were previous proposals for sales tax, I was against those. So why have I changed my position? Because the other options are worse. The other options are worse for our constituents. The other options don't have the ability to grow with the need. The other options will be, will be dealing with this issue again in two to three years, if we choose one of these other options. It'll be solved for now, you know. Some of us won't be on council anymore, and there'll be other people up here, but those people are going to have to deal with the same problem again. The sales tax is the only one, it is the one that most permanently solves this problem. None of these will permanently solve it forever, but it is the one that solves it the best. And oddly enough, it's also the one that spreads the burden the farthest. So it's the least amount of burden for each person. So, you know, I can, we can hear people saying, you know, oh, there's, you know, nobody wants a sales tax. And I get it. I don't want a sales tax either. But when you compare it to the other options, it is the, it is the least burdensome option. And if you can get past your knee-jerk reaction to a sales tax, to hearing those words, and you actually think about what each of these options mean to the community, that one makes the most sense. These other options are stopgap, kick-the-can-down-the-road measures that are going to solve the problem for a little bit, and then we're going to have to address it again. So I just want to make sure everyone's aware of that.
Any other comments before we vote on the motion? All right, so the motion on the table was to do, to move in the direction of a one percent sales tax, but in the meantime, to implement a fifteen dollar utility fee as a stopgap measure that would sunset when the sales tax goes into effect. And Brian, you made the motion. So how do you vote?
Yes.
Vanessa?
Yes.
Rick?
No.
Joel?
No.
Valerie?
No.
Rob?
No.
DJ?
No.
Dwayne?
No.
Motion failed, six to two. DJ?
So going back to the original comment, I can get behind what Valerie was saying. I think that's, I think that's defensible. I think that's doing what we absolutely must do. It's allowing for growth that I think we can all reasonably agree we need. And that doesn't mean that we found a permanent solution. That's an excellent point you make. But I can say with fair certainty that we're still going to be in pursuit of a, of another discussion about this. Because it is just, it's an undeniable fact that that will not permanently solve this problem. Given everything, and all the information that we have, and all the conversations we have, I think that's the most sensible option at this time, and I can get behind it.
Valerie?
I'm, I'm going to make a motion that we set a seventeen dollar and twenty-five cent utility fee to be brought forth as soon as possible, with a, an option of looking into something else down the road with citizen involvement.
Is there a second? Joel? Discussion on the motion? Rick, and then Vanessa?
I like the comment of a three-legged stool. Again, I would favor a food and beverage tax with that. I feel putting everything on utility fee is, again, concentrating on one sector of the community, and that's not a good thing. So I would be voting no.
Vanessa?
Although I do support the four point eight million dollar option stabilization with the eight new FTEs, I am not in support of putting all of this burden on the utility fee. That would be increasing the fee for small businesses by almost seven hundred dollars a year. I'm fearful that this option is the most onerous. Although it may be the most, you know, easy to digest for the community, it also might be the easy way out for this council. So I would prefer that we did not go this direction, that we did implement some type of a utility fee, so that we could gather payment from the nonprofit sector. But I would also like to see a, a sales tax or a food and beverage tax help supplement the rest of that and not put it all on the utility fee.
Thank you, Mayor. Trying to get my thoughts here. So, you know, I've always been supportive of the, of the utility fee, but I do have some concerns about the utility fee. We keep hearing that we want to fix this in the future, or come together groups, and I'd like to see a sunset rule, maybe twenty-four months, or, you know, and that this must go to the vote of the people at some point. I do not want to stop law enforcement today, but we need to put something into action to stop from laying off people. But I still feel that the people need to weigh in on this as a vote. So I'm only willing to support this if there's a sunset clause and that the people get to vote on it at some point, or we come up with another revenue within that sunset that people pass. Thank you.
Valerie?
I understand what you're saying, and I'm, I'm not sure exactly how to put the sunset, because I don't think you can put, I mean, it's just like a levy. We do have a levy, and that's when we're, when we're talking about the three-legged stool, we're talking about property tax as one of the legs. The utility tax is another leg. And what that does is a debt gets in people who are nonprofits, because we have a lot of nonprofits in our community, you know, and churches to, to help pay for it, too. Because currently, if you just have the property tax, there's only property tax owners, and they can pass it on, but you know that only nine percent of the people in Josephine County are, are paying the full thing. So, so I think the utility tax fits the bill, but I, I would love to see something else. But I think, obviously, it's the business people that are so opposed to anything. And so they're going to get that fifty dollar, whatever, but they're going to have an option to come forward with another solution or another leg to our stool. And I think that by putting that on them, because that will, it will directly affect them. But I think until you're directly affected, you're not going to pick yourself up to do and make a change. And so that's why I don't know how to build the sunset clause in, because I think, I don't want to say, well, we're going to sunset it, and then suddenly, here we are, two years down the road, and then we totally cripple our public safety. We can't do that. But if there is indeed a desire for those people who have those businesses to do something, then I'm hoping that this would motivate them to say, yeah, we need to do something different. Because I've heard the same thing over and over. I don't hear anybody saying, no, we don't need public safety. I haven't heard anybody say that. It was very clear when the levy passed, it was very clear, you know, in our discussions, that people know the need for public safety. But they're just not sure of the answer. And so I think that kind of puts the onus on them to help us with an answer. And yes, we're open anytime. You could email us, you can, you know, I'd be willing to work. I've worked on every levy, every one of those things I talked about. I worked to get those levies passed, and they didn't pass. It takes a lot of work and energy to register with the state and do all those things for all of that. So I'm willing to go out to a vote and to fight for a vote, to have a sales tax or a restaurant tax. I'm willing to do that. But I want other people to come to the table, too, and say that they're willing to be in that spot to do that. And, but I'm also going to stand for my public safety.
I'm going to jump in real quick, because as you all know, I don't get to vote on these at the day of the vote, but I do have the power to veto things. And you do have the ability to override me if you have six out of the eight votes. However, I just want to let you know, I don't think I can support adding more staff and adding a fee to the utility bill, because that increases our problems in the future without finding a long-term solution. So I just want to put that out there while you're thinking it through and before you vote. Does anybody else want to talk about this? Brian?
Yeah, I, I appreciate that we're all different. You know, you have eight, you have eight counselors representing you, all from different backgrounds, all with different life experiences, which is great. That's how it should be. I fear that sometimes up here, we lose perspective a little bit. We have our, you know, we have our circles of people that we talk to, and, and every one of our circles is a little bit different. And it can be hard to get out of those circles and to get a, a real representative picture of what we think the community wants. And that's been extraordinarily hard on this issue, because everyone's in a different position, everyone has a different idea. But when I take a step back and I try to set all that aside, and I think about putting a seventeen dollar a month utility fee on the bill, that's crazy. Like, we're going to put seventeen dollars a month on our already extremely blowed-up utility bill? Like, I, I can't believe that, like, this idea is, is as far as it is right now. Our constituents, we're a low-income community. I mean, the, a woman referenced tonight, the median income's thirty-three thousand dollars a year. That's extremely low in this day and age. And, God, putting it on the bill, the utility fee is so onerous. It's such a burden to a lot of people that, and, and us up here, we don't, we don't really know what that's like. We don't have that life perspective, but that's the life that a lot of people in our town have. And so I hope that we can, like, recognize that and take that into account when we're making this decision.
Rob?
Yeah, I appreciate that. Brian, just to let the public know, I mean, we do, we get emails, and over the years, they're pretty consistent, and probably not a lot of those people are here tonight. I know that there's a, a lot of people that, and I'm trying not to be ageist, so to speak, but there's a lot of people that are older who may not be confident driving at night. We get emails all the time from people that say, I live alone, I do two loads of laundry a week, I stopped watering my lawn, and my water bill is ninety-seven dollars a month. And they got nowhere to go from that. And we get emails like that pretty consistently over time. So that segment, even though they didn't speak here tonight, that segment is absolutely out there. And that's the segment that I think that Brian is referring to. So I, I too have a concern with putting it all on the utility fee for that reason. Again, many of those people aren't here tonight, but they are absolutely live in Grants Pass. So I can, I have empathy for them, and I, I probably feel I need to represent them as well.
Any further discussion before we are ready to vote? All right, so the motion on the table is to implement a seventeen dollar, well, a utility fee that would be at the seventeen to twenty-five cent level for the single-family households. But I think we have a matrix that's not in front of us tonight on how it would go up for different levels of businesses. And then looking at something down the road that would citizen involvement, was Valerie's motion. So Val, you made the motion. How do you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Rob?
No.
DJ?
Yes.
Brian?
No.
Vanessa?
No.
Rick?
No.
Joel?
Yes.
Dwayne?
No.
Motion failed, five to three. All right. Who's got another idea?
I'll make a motion of the idea that I floated earlier, of a combination of a three percent food and beverage tax, along with a nine-dollar utility fee, which, or whatever those, well, whatever those exact numbers need to be, to be the four point eight million. But I would make that motion, those two in combination, nine-dollar utility fee and a three-dollar, or three, three percent food and beverage tax.
Is there a second? Brian?
I want, I want to know the numbers first.
All right. Brian had the second, yeah, the, so on your matrix, right? Valerie, the, three percent food and beverage tax is estimated to bring in two point three five million. And a nine-dollar utility fee is not, not quite on the matrix here, but slightly less than two point eight million, so. Two point five, thank you. So together, those add up to be four point eight million dollars. So that would be at the level, I think the intent of this is also to add those staff positions. Is that correct, Rob?
Yeah, the attempt was to get to the four point eight million, that we would need to add the eight positions.
Okay. Discussion on this. Valerie?
My only question is, will that give us the money that we need in the first two years to bring those positions on? Because it will not, we will not immediately get the money from the food and beverage tax until we have gone through and the process of, of getting it. So that's part of it. And I want those people hired right up. I don't want to wait. I don't want to wait.
Guess that's a question.
Part of that would be depending on how much council wants to create or adopt an existing food and beverage tax. For instance, like our neighbor from Ashland, if you just wanted to review and look at what they are in their language, and you're comfortable with that, that would be a much quicker process than starting from scratch or looking at different food and beverage taxes and reviewing those and having discussions about what's accepted, what's included, what's not included. So on the front end, from a policy perspective, depending on the timeline, and then the implementation, like JC said, it's going to take a couple of months for us to just gear up and implement that, and then once it's established, we'll miss the first quarter. So there may either need to be a stopgap measure from, and it could be we have some additional reserves or something along those lines that will get us through to fill the gap, or maybe there's an intentional, say, we will utilize a certain part of contingency to fill that gap in order, or a third option would be, we stair-step the hiring until we make sure that we have all of those funds available. Maybe we do two and two, and then in four to six months, we're doing another two and two, bringing them on in anticipation for those revenues coming in. So those are three different scenarios that all have a different timeline on the spending of the money and the income of the money.
I do want to add a little bit more information, due to this would be over the threshold for federal procurement laws, because this will be a multi-year contract, potentially for the administration of a food and beverage tax, that we're going to need 45 to 60 days to put an RFP out there that is properly bid on, and we get the proper vendors to come in. So I just want to say that's going to delay that, those revenues. And optimistically, if you look at about half of a food and beverage, as far as if you're looking at a 3%, you're probably only going to get two collections with the earliest of it potentially coming online on October 1st. Again, we're going to do our best as staff to have that go as fast as possible, but I want to be reasonable as far as the timeline here, too.
Okay, and because of that concern, I don't think it's high enough to make me feel comfortable. So that, the utility fee, I would go for the utility fee being a little higher for me to feel comfortable, because I do think it's important that we, we've been kicking this down, and we've been dealing with this for so many years, I just don't want to deal, I want something that I feel more secure with.
Rob, then Brian?
So it may have been the December 18th meeting, but it was, at one particular meeting, I did bring up this eventuality, and at that time, JC said there could be, I guess I asked if there needed to be a bridge loan or something like that, and basically, he said that it could be done internally, that we could float that difference in the meantime. And I also just, I'm not even sure why I feel the need to say this, but last June, I brought up the fact that I didn't want to be in a position, making this decision, and, you know, staff or someone else saying, oh, my goodness, we don't have the time to do a food and beverage or a sales tax, you're going to have to go with the utility fee. I predicted that we would be here, and I tried to chase down more information on the food and beverage tax earlier. I've mentioned it at several meetings. I even got accused of being overly negative for mentioning it several meetings by one of my fellow counselors. Nonetheless, we're here tonight, and I know that at least at one time, JC did say that there could be an internal bridge of some type, or maybe JC or Aaron. But if we needed to bring that up a bit for the first, the utility fee up for the first year, and then it would come down some, if that's the main issue, until the food and beverage is online. But I believe I'd asked those questions and kind of covered that eventuality. If, in fact, that doesn't appear to be what staff says that they can do now, I would be willing to amend that, to go to whatever that needs to be for the first year on the utility, and then bring it down when the food and beverage, or the first few months even, first six months, and bring it down when the food and beverage tax is online, if that's what we need to do to make that balance out.
Brian, then Rick?
So just, just on the, on the point about the gap with instituting food and beverage and there being a gap that we're talking about, that gap, revenue-wise, is somewhere between 600,000 and 1.2 million, depending on how long it takes us to implement it. And from what Aaron said, using a stair-step approach to the hiring will help to curb that number down. And then we've also had preliminary discussions about our reserve fund for the general fund being high, and reducing the reserve fund amount by 3% is roughly $1 million. So that would very easily give us that gap funding we needed without having to tinker around with having a higher utility rate and then bringing the utility rate down and doing all of that. So I would be comfortable moving forward, even with that gap.
Are you trying to get in there?
I could.
Okay, let's have.
That, like Brian mentioned, that would be an okay scenario if council wanted to. I'm trying to get to a win for you, and I understand and greatly appreciate council wanting to bring on the individuals as quickly as possible. But if you did provide direction, which is in the motion today, with the nine and the three, we would, and if that's passed, ultimately, we could continue to try, do what we can to manage the budget and look for that. Bring on the individuals as we see fit and comfortable that will match the revenues that are coming in. And as we go on and get further on into the budget process, we'll know a little more about what our reserves are going to be coming up, and that might provide some additional flexibility with bringing on some people before the sales taxes implemented, et cetera. So from the spirit, we could implement it, the spirit of what you're desiring, may not be all at once if you wanted to do that, but we could still fall in line with that spirit and get it accomplished.
Rick?
I would be in favor of changing the utility fee from nine to 12, especially since some other counselors have indicated they might be willing to come on board for that. But I don't want to lose people, so, again, thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion before we vote? DJ?
I just mean to say, this is a defensible position. This makes sense. This is something that councils come up with, and it's narrowed down. I have to maintain my position. I've put my cards on the table, and as a matter of my individual integrity, I cannot get behind a transactional tax without the earners approving itself. I'm going to have to vote no.
All right. Any further discussion? Joel?
So, and with regards to that question of whether it goes to the voters or not, this motion would not have it go to the voters, is that correct? Okay.
Would not go to the voters prior to our decision. Correct.
Okay, thank you.
It's also not a final decision, you know, at this point, so keep that in mind. But anything we do tonight is just providing direction to staff to move forward with the next step. Dwayne?
Could you explain that, Sarah? I don't quite understand what you're saying.
Yeah, well, let's have, I'll have Aaron explain that, and then we'll get back to Dwayne. Yeah, please.
So what you're providing today is you'd be providing direction, and you're not actually taking formal action. Say, both issues, the utility fee would come to you in the form of an ordinance, and so would the sales tax. We would need to draft that ordinance. We have it. We would be able to put that on the February 21st meeting, which is your next business meeting, for you to adopt a utility fee with the designated fee that you showed direction for. At that point, you would be taking action on that. You'd have another public, basically a public hearing, you'd have to provide public comment to pass that ordinance. So you would have two weeks or so to filter through the decision that you've made now, let things settle before you take action. But you're providing direction for us to bring something to you at a future business meeting. And the same thing with the sales tax. It'll take a little bit of time. We would, we would get that done. We would provide you with, say, for instance, suggested food and beverage tax methodology and potential code or an RFP, like we mentioned, and we would get that ball rolling. But in the future, you would actually be taking a formal action on the direction you're providing today. Today is just direction.
Any further questions on that? Okay, Dwayne, go ahead.
I'm going to make it really short. I echo with Counselor Frazier's head, and I guess let's just get a vote.
All right, thank you. I think we're ready to vote. And so the motion on the table is to pursue a 3% food and beverage tax and a $9 utility fee at the single-family household level, and we have a matrix that further defines what businesses would pay. And we're expecting that to bring in about $4.8 million, and we would be adding in the eight additional staff. Rob, you made the motion. How do you vote?
Yes.
DJ?
No.
Brian?
I don't think this is the best solution, but this is all about compromise, so I'm going to vote yes.
Vanessa?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Valerie?
No.
Dwayne?
No.
Motion passes, five to three. All right.
Say one thing?
Yeah.
I just want to let everybody know, I'm not, I have a prior commitment planned for the 21st. I will be able to attend by phone. I don't want anybody on the council or the public to feel that I'm avoiding anyone by not coming to the meeting on the 21st. I will attend by phone, but I'm not going to be here. So if anyone wants to communicate with me, do it before or by email.
All right. Any additional comments on public safety funding? I think it's my expectation, just so everyone knows, that we would be able to get the utility fee vote on the 21st, but I don't know that we'd be quite ready for a food and beverage tax language at that point. Does that sound correct? Okay. So just so you know, that would be the next step, is formalizing the ordinance for that utility fee. All right. Let me, I got to dig down to wherever I put my agenda here now. Okay, I think what I'm going to have us do is, let's, let's talk about appointments real quick, and we'll do the sheets, and then we'll take a quick break and come back at our additional public comment, because you may need a break. So I'm going to read through these.
Can we start with the budget committee? Well, I just say that we don't need, there are four positions open and four candidates, so we could at this point literally just make a motion to.
Well, I'll just have you pass them all down, then we'll come back at it a little later in the meeting, because we still have some people here who are wanting to do general public comment, and I don't want to make them wait.
Okay, I get it.
So we have on the orange sheet with your historical building and sites commission, there's one opening on this commission, and two candidates have applied. They are listed in alphabetical order, Danielle Glarem and Stephen Stone. And the HBSC recommended approval for Danielle Glarem. They said they appreciated the way she responds to the questions she was asked, and that her vision for a future historic district in downtown aligned with the mission and goals of the commission. So if you could please make your selection and pass those down, that would be great. We also have on the budget committee, four openings on this committee, and four candidates have applied. They are, in alphabetical order, Tripp Androidi reapplying this year, Robert Brosius, Sandy Novak, and Adriana Reinhardt. Then we have on the Parks Advisory Committee, one opening on this committee, three candidates have applied for the appointment, and they are, in alphabetical order, Reed Beaumont, John Blackett reapplying for his position, Allison Cavanagh. And the committee recommended appointing Allison Cavanagh. They said they were impressed with her detailed application that highlighted her work history and volunteer experience. The committee felt her previous experience at Josephine County Parks and the YMCA would be an asset. So if you could all please pass those down to me. Dwayne, you're welcome to text me yours. I'll do the tallying after we come back. I'm going to give you all a five-minute break, and we'll come back and do public comment right after that. So it's 9:46. Take five. Hey, council, come back to your seats, please. All right. Looks like we are back live on the air, so welcome back to the council meeting. We have not yet finished our appointments, but we will come back to that after public comment, because we have a number of people who have been waiting for quite a while tonight to talk to you. So let's see if they're still here. Finn Franklin?
Tim Mitchell?
I have Finn Franklin. David Dapper, not here. Sandy, Sandy Rourke? Think I can hear her outside, but Rebecca Nugent, there you are.
Hi, I'm back. Rebecca Nugent, and I live here in Grants Pass. And I sent you guys all an email probably about a week ago, and I also attended the last meeting, so I could kind of get a feel for how everything works here. I'm on the Parks Committee currently, and I've been on it for about a year and a half. My husband and I, and we have four kids, and we've been in Grants Pass for going on, I think, just over 10 years, probably about 11. And both of us run our own businesses, and we work hard to serve our community and to be a part of it, and be a part of it for good. I have noticed a terrible influx of homelessness and mostly car camping on Gilbert Creek Park. And my kids go to North Middle School, and they also go to Highland Elementary School. And I've brought this up several times in our Parks Committee meetings, and I understand the injunction. Believe me, I have read the thing back and forth, and I probably know it as good as the city attorney. Not really, but I have read it a lot, and I understand everything that goes into it. But one thing that isn't being addressed, and is also, right now, not covered in that injunction, is the cars. So I think currently, the law states that you have to have personal property enough for survival. You have to give somebody a shelter and keep them, you know, enough to where they can survive. That doesn't include bringing their entire belongings with them on the road in a clunky car that's all parked right in front of my kid's school. So currently, my daughter, if she attends sports tonight, they had a basketball game down in Medford that I missed to be here, which is a big sacrifice. That is a big sacrifice to miss my kid's sports, to be here to talk to you today. And just like all of you are sacrificing time with your families and other things to be here. They have to go through the, the North Middle School basketball team has to go through the parking lot, and it is full at any given day to get to the buses for the, for the basketball team, or to go off to any other offsite. It's not safe. We all can attest to the fact that the drugs being done in the parks are not safe. I meet on a committee every month, and I sit and talk about all of the problems. We have public comments come in every month. We understand what's happening. And right now, the parks need to be addressed, and especially the ones that are not owned by the City of Grants Pass. They need to be given back to, they need to be given back to the school district. You guys aren't doing a good job managing them right now. And I'll tell that to the Parks Committee, I've told that to Josh himself, I'll tell that to Bradley. Right now, those parks need to be taken back by the schools, because they're not safe for our kids. Period. Thank you.
Lisa Austin?
I don't live in Grants Pass, but my business is in Grants Pass. So I own Motion Matrix on the corner of Hawthorne and Morgan. And I've been made aware that an application to city planning has been put in for UCAN to occupy the building directly across the street from Motion Matrix. I serve over 800 kids that are enrolled. I have 32 preschoolers in my state-recorded preschool program at Motion Matrix. Putting UCAN there effectively sandwiches us between DHS and UCAN. We already clean our flower beds of needles. There's garbage everywhere. We regularly are asking homeless people to leave our property. We pick up human feces off the sidewalk now. I understand there, well, I saw, I have cameras, there was a warming center opened up in that building on Saturday, and just since then, since Saturday, I have seen a humongous increase of homeless people on the sidewalks all around my business. So it's not safe for the kids and the mothers. We're there till 8:30 at night. I have young staff members. It is not a good place to put services such as that right next to children. I believe in services. I believe they need care. I believe they need funding. I believe in all that.